Budget meetings are always such a raucous proceeding. You know, it's hard to get this crowd under control when you get them together. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our work session. We have to start, however, with an important courtesy to somebody who's been here for 37 years and who's announced that he's had enough of us all. David Schaaf, congratulations on your impending retirement. We're glad you're going to stick around for an orderly transition for a great bureau, and we'll get to celebrate you a lot. But now that it's official, let's hear it for David Schaaf.
He was joking on his way in this morning that he wasn't sure if his card would still work, and it did. So we're not done with you yet, and you're not done with us. But thank you, David.
Mr. Mayor, I just have to say that David's been wonderful to work with. He's been a great bureau director, and most importantly, he's very tolerant of me when I say, as I often do, and will more often for the next several months, "Schaaf, can you dig it?"
All right, everybody. Good morning. So we are launching into this process. I once again want to thank everybody for their participation in the budget process so far, and now going into this next critical formal evaluative phase. I want to thank our volunteer budget advisors for once again giving us a lot of your time and expertise. We're going to rely on you a lot as we figure out how to deal with an improving budget, just as we did when we had to make difficult decisions about cutting budgets. So thank you for being here and for helping us figure out how to invest in the future. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Scott, who's going to start this morning.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm Andrew Scott, City Budget Director, and welcome to another round of our council budget work sessions. I'm going to go over some logistics today and cover a little bit just in terms of what's in the binders and what's on tap over the next couple of weeks as well, and give an overview. And I may have underestimated the time a little bit, so maybe a little longer than five minutes. But after that, we'll transition then into the citywide asset management report. And then today, we're going to hear from the bureaus of parks, the Portland Bureau of Emergency Management, and the Portland Housing Bureau. So in terms of just overall logistics, you'll note, and as they have been in past years, bureaus, depending on their size, have different lengths of time. We have asked the bureaus with one-hour time blocks to limit their presentations to about 20 minutes, leaving about 40 minutes for conversation. For the 30-minute bureau time blocks, they've been asked to limit it to about 10 minutes, leaving about 20 minutes of conversation. But again, we encourage council to ask questions during the presentation. These sessions go a lot better when it's not sort of one and then the other. And the bureaus know that. So as you're going through, whether it's the citizen advisors or council, if there's a specific question, go ahead and jump in, and it'll be more of an interactive presentation at that point. Guidelines for the bureaus, they were asked just to do a few things as part of their presentation. They were asked to identify any significant budget issues that council needs to address in the 1516 budget. They were asked to address any infrastructure backlogs they have or service inequalities throughout the city. They were asked to talk about their key decision packages, which obviously are included in their requested budgets in our reviews. They were asked to link their budgets and those key decision packages to their key priorities as a bureau, and also their key performance measures, which they've developed as part of this year's budget, and I'll come back to those in just a second. And as part of this, there will be no formal CBO presentation, but we will weigh in on major issues or questions that we think need to be raised or asked if they haven't come up as part of the conversation, or if we're asked specifically to explain any of our recommendations. And of course, our recommendations are included in your binders with each of the bureau budget reviews. So just to go through very quickly what's in the binder, you've probably read through the entire thing already, but just in case you haven't, there is, of course, the schedule at the front, and then there's a summary memo from the City Budget Office sort of outlining...
Andrew, let me just be clear. We have gone through it, but we've paid special attention to those things that each of us have staked our political careers on, ran on, and that you have suggested there be no funding for. That has gotten special attention.
This is one of my favorite times of year, Commissioner. So there is, again, that sort of overall summary memo, and then behind that is a decision package tracker, which is a very technical, just sort of numbers document. But again, it has every decision package that was submitted in bureau-requested budgets, both what the package was and then the CBO recommendation. That's towards the front. Each individual bureau section also has a decision package tracker just for that bureau. But if you're looking for the entire thing, it is towards the front of the binder. Behind that, then, there is some citywide historical information. This is in the citywide issues tab, and we've covered this, I think, with most of the council offices, but we're happy to go over it again if there are any questions. It sort of goes over the last seven years in terms of changes in base funding, decision package funding, FTEs and so forth, and provides some historical contextual information. And then there is also in that same section the infrastructure project summary ranking sheet. We will refer back to that as we talk about different bureaus, particularly the infrastructure bureaus that have made requests. And again, this is part of the ranking process, which we'll also talk about as part of this asset management presentation in just a few minutes. And then finally, behind that are all of the bureau-specific reviews. And these are, again, the City Budget Office reviews of the requested budgets. In that section is also any hard copies of the bureau presentation materials that they provided to us. So as the bureaus come up today, and they might have, they'll have a presentation that should be in that section as well. Any questions, then, overall, about the binder's information? There's a lot of information, a lot of paper. It is all available online, and we have posted on the CBO website, so portlandoregon.gov/cbo. And you should, if you're watching from home or if you're on your mobile device, you should be able to find the information there as well. And then the very last thing that I want to highlight, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing in the binders, there are budget maps as well. So in the very back, all of the bureau budget maps they've developed for the current fiscal year 1516 are available as well. They may be something you want to look at as the bureaus have come up. And again, they're both budget mapping, but also level of service maps throughout the city. And then the final thing I want to touch on before we let Josh tell you about a little bit of good news is the performance dashboards. And again, thank you. You got these by email last night, and you have a hard copy this morning, and I am sorry that these were so late, but it's been just a little bit of a, it's a little bit of an effort to pull these together. We will have dashboards for every one of the bureaus that you're going to hear from over the next few days, actually, sorry, over the next few weeks. But I want to walk very quickly through what these are so that we can sort of get a little bit of a sense of what these, of how to read these dashboards. And then in addition, what you got this morning were the parks, housing, and emergency management dashboards. We will be getting you the rest of the bureaus later this week, so you'll have a little bit more time in advance of those hearings to take a look at them. I want to draw your attention to the overall explanation, again, of how to read these dashboards. It's pretty intuitive once you do it a couple of times, but the first time, it may not be. There are, as you're going to see on here, there are arrows, and there are both up and down arrows and red and green arrows. And the reason for that is that different measures, sometimes going up is good, sometimes going up is bad, and sometimes going down is good, and sometimes going down is bad. So again, the up and down is simply showing the direction, the trend, that we're seeing in that particular key performance measure. The green or the red is whether that trend is positive or negative. And it'll make sense, again, as you look at some of these. But again, the arrows are showing the trend direction, the color is showing whether it's going in a positive or negative direction. And then finally, there is sort of the yellow, no trend, in terms of if you compare the two, the past two fiscal years' performance has not changed. There is a gray diamond, whether it's insufficient data, either the measure is new or contains only one year of data. And finally, there's a blue dot if it's a workload measure. So again, it's tracking workload in contrast to an efficiency or effectiveness or outcome measure. And then we've also included on that overall summary sheet some questions, suggested questions as you're going through this and talking to the bureaus about what might help sort of get at the root of some of these performance issues. Again, just, we've covered this before, but I just, I want to reiterate this process because it is somewhat new, and bureaus in the city have been tracking performance for many, many years. And what we did this year, and what the, at the mayor's direction with his guidance this last fall, is really to work to develop these key performance measures. And so, again, these key performance measures are intended to be outcome indicators. The goals are that they are going to be clearly understandable, results-oriented, selective, useful, reliable, and comparable. And I think the bureaus have done a really great job of developing these KPMs. And as you go through these, you'll note that some of these, I think, are more outcome-focused than others, and that may be a good conversation to have with the bureau as well. So to the extent you feel like the KPM is not necessarily measuring the ultimate goal of what we're trying to do as a city, that's a question as well to ask in whether there are different measures. And I want to stress, this is the opportunity for council as you're going through these, since it is the first time you've seen the dashboards. We're really looking for any feedback. Again, we've been working with the bureaus for a long time on these, but we're really looking for council feedback so that we can solidify and finalize these key performance measures. So if you have issues with the things that are being measured, these hearings are the time to raise those questions and then have that conversation. Okay, that was a lot. Anything before we dive in? Okay? So let me know as we go through if you do have any logistical questions or schedule questions or anything else, we'll try and answer them, and I'll turn it over to Josh.
All right. Thanks, Andrew. Josh Howard, City Economist. As we briefed most of you last week, there haven't been a lot of changes since December. Essentially, though, those things that have changed have been unanimously positive in terms of our revenue sources and the economy in general. The U.S. economy continues to improve. Oregon does a little bit better on average than the nation, and Portland does better than the rest of Oregon on average over the last year or so, and that trend's just continuing now. As we look at our current situation, we're looking at, we're looking at having about 11 and 1/2 million in excess ongoing revenues and about 19 and 1/2 million in excess one-time revenues heading into the next budget. You know, as we look ahead to the next steps, really, the uncertainty lies with business license taxes, as it always does this time of year. They're very volatile. I get about 2/3 of our collections after March, so there's still, could be some significant movement. That having been said, all indications are that things are looking good on that end as well at this point, but it is very early. We'll come out with a final forecast the last week of April after we get data from the revenue division over in OMF regarding sort of final year, final collections for the April 15 tax time. So with that, I can head it back to Andrew or answer any questions.
Not much of a story, but it's a good one. That's right. And maybe then the transition into the asset management report, and this is something that we did include in sort of that overall summary memo. But one of the things that, again, CBO recommends, that given the excess revenue, is that council and the city look for investments that are going to increase the city's overall financial resiliency. This is something we've talked about, you know, during prior budgets as well. But when we're looking at sort of what the city's long-term costs are and long-term obligations, is trying to make investments now that are going to reduce that cost curve, that are going to bend it down rather than up. And just as a couple examples of that, investments in our infrastructure, again, tend to bend the cost curve down. These are costs that we're going to have no matter what, and we either take care of them today, or we take care of them tomorrow, and they're generally more expensive. So to the extent we do that, the city becomes more financially sustainable and financially resilient moving forward. On the other hand, investments in people and programs tend to bend the cost curve up. Traditionally, personnel costs grow faster than inflation. And so, again, the more people and programs we add, the more that can squeeze in the future as those costs tend to outpace. So this is not to indicate we shouldn't add anything back. We obviously have made a number of reductions throughout the recession and then with the library levy and some other changes a couple of years ago. And so I think there are some necessary reinvestments in some of those programs, but what I would caution council is just to be very prudent in terms of those decisions and very conscientious, knowing that as you add people and programs, they will outpace inflation. And so the next time we have a downturn, it could exacerbate the situation at that point. And finally, I would say there are other opportunities as well. The mayor and council, you've invested in reducing debt in the past, making, sometimes cash financing some capital projects as well. And finally, we could also invest in a rainy day fund, to the extent that that was something of interest. We do have a general fund reserve, as you all know, at 10%. A rainy day fund would be on top of that, and again, could be available during a downturn to help bridge some of those reductions. So with that overview, I think we'll bring up Susan Anderson, and we'll launch into the capital assets report.
Good morning, Commissioner Susan Anderson, Director of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, and good morning to all of you who are volunteering and helping us. In the past, those of you who remember this presentation, we did it in a way where each one of the, sort of a popping heads of each one of the bureau directors came up. This year, we're going to simplify it a little bit, and Andrew and I are going to do the presentation. In your binder, you should have the slides, presentation. It starts with a slide that looks like this. So, okay. And you'll also have the 2014 Citywide Asset Management Report and an executive summary that's just a four-page fold-out. So going through the slides, the first one there, it says citywide coordination. And I'd say that's kind of starting on a positive note. Citywide coordination is something we do a lot of. As you probably know, we kind of coordinate citywide infrastructure on two levels. One is with the bureau directors. We meet, the planning and development directors meet once or twice a month on all development issues. And in addition, staff from six bureaus meet as a citywide asset management group. The staff-level group collects data, they share their expertise. Together, they implement a shared work plan for best practices. They also work together to develop the citywide asset report. The role that BPS, my bureau, plays is to bring the group together to facilitate discussion, coordinate and collect all the data, and put together the report with the help of all the bureaus. The group tends to really push itself and push each other in terms of kind of constant improvement. They did a formal self-assessment this year. In the report that's in the, in the, your binder there, on page 37, there is a report card from the different bureaus on how they've done on their asset management, sort of a self-assessment. And they're using those results to set priorities for their shared work plan. The next slide, which looks like this, which is the first pie chart, you can see what the total value of our assets are, which is $34 billion. As you can see, about 2/3 of that is water and sewer. The next page shows the condition of our assets. A little over 20% of our assets are about $7 billion of the $34 billion are in poor or very poor condition. As you know, much of that is transportation-related. On the flip side, if you look at the areas in blue and green, the good news is that about half of our assets are in very good or good condition. The next page shows that if we are to avoid further deterioration of our assets, for example, we're going, trying to stop the movement from going from fair to poor or poor to very poor, we need to invest nearly $250 million a year. Again, more than 2/3 of that is for transportation. And Leah, and I'm sure Commissioner Novak and others can answer questions about that. On the next page, this graph shows the interactive pieces and kind of the flow of good asset management. I think the first time I came up to do this report six years ago, we didn't have, we knew what we were doing in the bureaus, but we didn't have sort of a flow and kind of best practices around it in terms of helping each other do the best work in all of the bureaus. So the graph shows sort of the interactive pieces. You need to set service levels, assess risks, do cost-benefit analysis, define funding strategy, and finally, implement the projects and track performance, and then start over again. Next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the pieces of the asset management process, and next slide is about levels of service. This example talks about how parks has set a key target or a level of service to have all households be within a half-mile walk to a park or a natural area. Each of the bureaus sets levels of service, and those are based on their system needs, on regulatory requirements, on the expectations of customers, and then the service levels are reflected in the key performance measures that Andrew has just mentioned. On the next page is an example of a service level for PBOT compared to the amount of money needed for that level of service. During the funding conversations that have occurred over the past year, about $91 million was the amount required in fiscal year 2012-13 to meet pavement improvement service levels. This shows that the longer the city waits to fund repayers, the more expensive it gets. And mainly, that's, for example, fixing a street that's in fair condition is less expensive than fixing a street that's in poor condition. You just have limited your options, and the expense goes up. Next slide is about risk. Risk is a combination of two factors. The consequence of failure, how big, how messy is it going to be, how hurtful can it be, and the likelihood that the asset will fail. Consequences can be minor, things like, for the Water Bureau, if they had to shut off water for two hours for, you know, a home, that might be considered a minor consequence. And then obviously, there can be major consequences of major street or other failures. The goal in asset management is to stay away from the red and orange areas and move down and try and be in the green areas of that map. A typical example in your everyday life is if you own a car, changing the oil in it. So if you don't change the oil, both the consequences and the likelihood of engine problems are pretty high. So pretty much, you're up in the red-orange area most of the time, yet the cost for doing it is pretty low, and so we tend to change our oil. Things that have a low level of risk and the consequences are low, those are the kinds of things that the bureaus are trying, they tend to push off until a time before there is failure. But those don't necessarily have to go to the top of the list. Next slide, also about risk. This shows how BES assesses the risk of sewer failure and prioritizes capital projects. The map highlights areas of the city where the pipe system has the greatest likelihood and greatest consequence of failure. Basically, they look at all the different factors related to pipe condition and capacity, combined with the types of facilities that are nearby. Are there critical facilities like fire stations or schools? And also then, they're looking at different factors of different neighborhoods, like are there a lot of basements that might flood, things like that. Again, BES can provide more additional information. Next slide is an example of the 911 center. This past year, the roof of the Portland Communication Center, which houses 911 system, started leaking in several places. The risks were significant in terms of damage, and the repairs would also extend the life of the building. So in response, that project was recently funded. The next page shows an example from the Water Bureau. The picture on the left shows a cracked supply line on Powell Butte. The cracked pipe on the left then resulted in the picture on the right, and some pretty huge runoff. Also, this area in terms of the, again, the amount of consequence, this area is prone to landslide, so it was particularly important to repair it quickly. So that's just a handful of examples. Before I hand it over to Andrew, who's going to talk a little bit about funding options, I wanted to thank my other bureau directors that are here. I also wanted to thank the city asset managers group. It's a group of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 12 people. They meet regularly. I think this group is a really good example of the coordination. We often talk about how we're all in silos. We're not. We're working together a lot of the time, especially behind the scenes, and those groups are tending to push each other. One other area I'd like to mention, and we've talked about it a little bit in the planning directors group, planning and development directors group. Years ago, maybe a decade ago, parks didn't used to be in this plan, this report. Parks was seen as an amenity, not really as a key infrastructure of the city. That has shifted. We understand that it is indeed a key infrastructure of the city. Similarly, I think, something we've talked a lot about in the past year is affordable housing. And I'd like you to think about the issue of although we don't own affordable housing, many cities do, and they would include it in this kind of a report. So we might want to think about the idea of at least monitoring, tracking, you know, how much affordable housing do we have, and in what parts of the city is it, and make it a part of this report. So hand it over to Andrew.
Great. Thank you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about funding strategies and options, and talk about sort of the progress that I think we've made to date over the last couple of years, and then ways that we can push deeper into this backlog, and I think there are some concrete things that we can do. This slide is intended to get at the funding strategies and sort of talk about the multi-pronged approach that's going to be needed. General fund and revenue generating bureaus obviously have different sources of funding that they use for both their operating and their capital, and therefore, different solutions are needed to address those funding gaps. And again, you can see that in terms of water and sewer rates versus general fund for parks and versus transportation, which is sort of a combination of those. And because of these complexities, again, the solution to the city's overall infrastructure funding issue needs to be multi-pronged. There's not going to be any silver bullet to this, but again, it needs to be a multifaceted approach that's going to look to the long term. It's not, it's a problem that's developed over decades, and we won't be able to fix it in any one budget cycle, but I think there are things we can do to make some significant progress on it. So we go to the next slide in terms of funding options. You have seen this before, but I want to sort of come back to it occasionally to show the progress that I think we are making. So during the last year, last budget process, city council adopted a budget note that directed the bureau asset managers that Susan was just talking about to work with the city budget office and develop funding options for allocating resources to address this backlog. And in the fall bump, you received a report that outlined a whole suite of options for closing that funding gap, again, recognizing that this needs to be a multi-pronged approach. What this... What this chart does is it shows the things that we are actually already either implementing or are, that they either have been implemented or they're ongoing. And so, again, in the, in, in last year's fall bump, Council did allocate more of the excess resources, excess one-time than we have in the past for major maintenance and replacement projects. Obviously, the pursuit of new revenues in P-Bot is ongoing, and a Parks bond was passed. That actually wasn't part of the report, but it is part of addressing the Parks backlog. In terms of the two thousand fifteen, sixteen recommendations, again, Council just recently passed some policy revisions, which increased the amount of one-time that goes to these capital, infrastructure, maintenance, and backlog projects from twenty-five percent to fifty percent, and also looked at next year's, it wasn't just the, it wasn't just the excess balance from the prior year, but it's, it's future-year forecast as well in terms of, of, of doing that. And the, the report also recommended re-establishing the capital set aside. One of the things you'll see in the City Budget Office recommendations is we are recommending about three-point-four million of ongoing resources from this year's budget for capital projects. We have allocated those to specific capital projects, specific capital projects that are listed in the, in the report, but again, that would be ongoing resources, and so, would re-establish that capital set aside at three-point-four million dollars. And I think, as we go through this budget process, I hope that's a conversation we have as well, whether that's the right size or, or whether that should be even larger. Then, again, bureaus can come back every year and make requests out of that, out of that pot. And then, finally, debt financing the fueling stations and, and getting that, which is, again, a major issue, both from emergency preparedness and also just taking care of our infrastructure. Council had approved that as part of the last year's fall bump as well. The other things on there are things that, again, need further conversation, but these include increasing rates for internal service funds, so they have adequate replacement reserves for when those technologies and other facilities need to be replaced. Developing ongoing general fund, current appropriation level target increases, so that we can cover sort of the routine maintenance that needs to be covered in our bureaus, in our operating bureaus, so, again, preventing the situation from getting worse. And then, in sixteen, seventeen budgets and beyond, again, continuing with those same In terms of the next slide, I just want to talk a little bit about the general fund project ranking. And this process, which I think you're becoming more familiar with, we, we started last year in the fall bump. We, again, worked with all the city's asset managers, including the Water and BES asset managers, who, of course, didn't have any requests for general fund on this, but were incredibly helpful in terms of bringing their asset management expertise to the table and helping develop the scoring criteria. We did make some revisions to that criteria, based, again, on feedback after that first run. We've used it again in terms of evaluating the projects that came forward this year. And, and again, you can see the City Budget Office recommendations, which really closely align with those project ranking criteria. But, you know, and you can see there, this last year, again, the fueling infrastructure came through that process, as well as about four-point-two million dollars for transportation, parks, and facilities. And then, again, as part of the fifteen, sixteen budget process, that fifty percent of one-time general fund resources, which, at the time the slide was made, was about seven-point-two million. With the new numbers you heard from Josh this morning, it's closer, just under ten million dollars. And again, that may change a little bit before the April forecast as well. And we received just under thirty million dollars of projects that were ranked. I think, in, in terms of just wrapping up the presentation and getting any questions Council has, you know, I think the city has taken a lot of steps in the right direction, and as I mentioned, we've, we've made a lot of good progress. I think learning from each other and sharing best practices across bureaus, this is something the City Asset Managers Group has been doing for some time. And again, we've been able to tap into their knowledge to sort of bring some of that asset management criteria and process to the, to the budget funding decisions as well. Again, pursuing new revenues for our streets, I think that's, that's an issue that, that's, that's going to continue to be there in terms of, as Susan mentioned, that backlog, in terms of the Transportation Bureau. Allocating more funding for major maintenance and replacement and re-establishing the general fund capital set aside, again, are things that Council can continue to do to chip away at some of that, at some of that backlog. And then, keeping up that momentum, again, these are the things that are listed as, as sort of part of this year, next year's budget processes, in terms of the incremental rate increases for the revenue bureaus, and continuing to use asset management to inform our budget decisions, and continuing to invest in order to narrow the gap. One thing I do want to note, because it has come up in some of my conversations with Council offices, as we've gone through the ranking, processed the project ranking, that is done from an asset management standpoint. And what that means is, again, the asset managers sort of look at it from just a, a risk of failure and a benefit approach, and their scoring criteria, and we're happy to walk through, we've got all the scoring sheets for all of those projects. What I think it does leave out is, when you start putting other lenses on top of it, such as an emergency management lens or an equity lens, and, and, and again, there are criteria in there that sort of give some additional points for those things, but Council may, as you're going through those projects, you know, look at those and apply some other criteria as well, again, some city values issues. And, and to the extent that a project that might have a really good emergency management benefit in the future, it may not rank super-high in that criteria, because the, the asset may not be in failure, it may be something that we expect to fail during a major earthquake. That's the kind of criteria that, again, you know, Council will need to use their judgment in terms of doing. The same thing with equity. There are some bonus points that these projects get in terms of their equity impact, but when you're looking at projects in different parts of town, or you're looking in projects that are, you know, have traditionally received fewer city services, that may also be a criteria you want to apply, you want to apply as you're going through those projects. So, with that, Susan, I don't know if you had anything else to wrap up?
Most of the bureau directors are here, so if you had specific questions about transportation, water, BES, feel free to call them up.
Actually, this isn't a question as much as a comment. Susan, could we see slide three again, the seven-point-three billion assets in poor, very poor conditions?
Yeah, it's that one.
So, what I wanted to observe about this is you see that our transportation assets are in much worse condition than our water and sewer assets. And that's a consequence of the fact that we, as a city, have adopted a very different attitude towards funding transportation than our attitude towards funding water and sewer. Last May, the mayor and I proposed a twelve-dollar-a-month transportation fee for most households, although people living in apartments and low-income people would have paid less. And we proposed a non-residential fee that was based in a formula used by a number of municipalities, including Medford, Oregon. And the reaction was swift. We heard a lot of talk about how this has to go to the voters, and concerns about regressivity, and concerns about the impact on small businesses, and on nonprofits, and on faith organizations. And in the end, of course, as you know, we did not adopt a transportation fee. By contrast, last week, we had a hearing on water and sewer rates, in which those bureaus proposed an increase in the average family's water and sewer bill for this next year of four dollars and fifty-eight cents, their monthly water and sewer bill. And this would only be the latest in a long line of increases. If this latest proposal is adopted, since two thousand and nine, the average family's water and sewer bill will have gone up by twenty-seven dollars a month. The base charge for water and sewer would go up to eleven dollars and ninety-one cents a month, virtually the same as the total amount of last year's proposed transportation fee. And the base charge, of course, is what you pay simply for being hooked up to the system, even if you never flush the toilet or turn on the tap. And, but the response to last week's proposal was very different. We didn't hear a lot of people saying this has to go to the voters. We didn't hear a lot of people saying this is regressive, although water and sewer fees are regressive. There's not a great correlation between income and water and sewer usage. We didn't hear concerns about the impact on small business, even though small businesses do pay water and sewer fees, and they don't get a small-business discount. And we didn't hear concerns about the impact on nonprofits and faith organizations, even though nonprofits and faith organizations do pay water and sewer fees, and they don't get a discount. Now, I think I know the reason for the difference in the reaction. David Leslie, VecuMedical Ministries, told me the reason last year. In the middle of the street fee debate, I ran into him at an unrelated event, and I said, "David, why are the faith organizations raising such a ruckus about this proposed transportation fee, when I can't recall you, you know, flooding the halls, complaining about water and sewer fees?" And David looked at me and he said, "Well, I guess with water and sewer, we're used to it." And that's the reason. We're used to it. We're used to raising water and sewer fees every year, and we're used to letting the transportation system rot. And that's understandable. Inertia is a powerful force. I think that "we're used to it" is probably the explanation for a large percentage of human behavior across the board. But in this case, if we keep on doing what we're used to doing, the city will die, because a city cannot function without a working transportation system, any more than it can survive without a working water and sewer system. So, I thought that that slide very well illustrates the difference between our approach to funding water and sewer and our approach to funding transportation.
Steve, I, I shouldn't say this in a public forum, but I think I know why we had such a tepid response last week, which is, we forgot to send out a notice. You know, one comment about, about water sewer infrastructure that's interesting. The Water Bureau is one of a handful of public utilities, one of a small number of public utilities in the country, that has a triple-A credit rating. And that's a really big deal. That means we can borrow money at very favorable rates, which means we can stretch the dollar to do upgrading of the infrastructure. What's interesting about that, though, is that when the rating agencies look at all the factors that, before they give you a rating, one of them is, are you willing to invest in your system? So, interestingly, we get points for actually being candid with ratepayers about the need to reinvest in infrastructure investment, and that gives us a better rating for Moody's, which allows us to borrow money more cheaply. So, we have a conundrum, and I think, Mayor, when we establish the pub this, this summer, and we're going to have them in place by August, so that our new oversight body can begin with the next budget cycle, one of the questions that, that we'll put to them is, are we making the right kind of investments in infrastructure? And there's always been this assumption that if you have a truly independent body looking at this stuff, they're going to come in and say you're spending too much. Others, though, have speculated that if, if you take the politics out of it, you may actually have people come back and say you're not spending enough. You're not spending enough to replace the infrastructure. You're not investing enough in resilience and other things. So, we're going to have an interesting process in hearing from a new oversight body, but, but it, but it is important to know that, that the reason we can borrow money so cheaply is because independent rating agencies appreciate the fact that we are willing to make these investments. We're not making enough. The, the chart shows that we're still, there's a gap. And one of our biggest challenges is that our regional partners are increasingly going it alone. Places like Tigerd, which, which charge more for water than we, we do, are looking at double-digit rate increases as far as the eye can see, because they've decided to go it alone. That is actually terrible for a regional water system, because we've got this plentiful supply that we should be sharing with the region, but folks are now deciding to go it alone and to take water out of rivers that, my guess, over the next twenty years, are going to become even more regulated in terms of what you can and can't do in those rivers. So, it's a, it's a perverse and, and unfortunate set of policy choices. Bottom line is, we're going to have to figure out how to maintain stabilized rates and invest in, in, in replacing aging infrastructure. And, and just like with P-Bot and our other sister bureaus, that's really one of the great challenges. And, and how you do that without provoking ratepayer rebellions is, is a neat trick. And, and we'll find out, when we have the pub in place, how we can do a better job of communicating that tension.
Need to add to that, that we did have a similar furor to the transportation funding issue when we were considering nineteen percent increases for the Water Bureau. And I did not get very much credit for being able to work with Commissioners Saltzman and Fish and Mayor Adams for decreasing that by six percent by not, by not building the filtration plant in the Boeran watershed, because difference from eighteen percent and twelve percent, it's still, as Commissioner Fish said, double digits. So, I think that a lot of the reason that we're not hearing so much concern from ratepayers now is because of Commissioner Fish's leadership and the fact that we are really being prudent about what things are we going to buy and what things are we not going to buy. So, that's part of, I think, the challenge that we need to, to prove in transportation and to help people understand that, in fact, yes, we do have a failing transportation system. So, I think your point was really well made.
Yeah, I think the other, the way I would second Commissioner Novak's analysis is that we have prudently, responsibly, and regressively continuously invested in our water resources. We have episodically invested in our parks system with bond measures and infusions of a slightly more progressive revenue source, the general fund. And we have done neither for transportation. We've neither had a race, rate base, nor have we passed bond measures. So, you know, that's why we're in this systemic imbalance, you know, in this core infrastructure. And we've got to address that. And we've tried once, we're going to try again, but we have to address that. Please.
Andrew, on the, that chart on page three, which I think is a great chart, is a snapshot. It doesn't give me any perspective on trends over the last few years. And I understand the, the whole recessionary issues, so maybe last year and the last few years aren't a good comparison, but it would be interesting to see if we're making progress over the years.
Can we get a five-year trend?
I'm actually going to defer to, to Bob if he wants to take this question. Yeah, yeah, I think we can provide that. There have been some definitional changes
Yes.
over the years, and that's the only, the only caution there. So, there may be an apples-to-oranges issue, but, but we can definitely look at the numbers from prior reports and
And it doesn't have to be perfect, of course.
Give you the caveats, yeah.
The second thing, I, I don't know why there was such a response to the transportation fee, or whatever you want to call it. You know, I would think that one thing that you might want to consider is that there was a lot of frustration and maybe anger about the fact that historically, the Council hasn't invested in, in transportation and, you know, they'll, I don't remember the movie, but I'm mad as hell, I'm not going to take it anymore. So, you might consider that.
But, that's something, me, we, I think that we are going to address, I hope the mayor is going to address it by putting a lot more money, general fund money into transportation this year, but we can't make up for the fact of the lack of investment in the past few decades. One point I want to make is that although, yes, there was more furor over water and sewer rates in past years, in spite of the furor, the Council was willing to approve those double-digit increases. And just a final quick point, I like the Parks access level of service chart, and next year, maybe we can work on one for P-Bot, because we have service gaps, too. I mean, we should add twenty thousand ADA ramps, we should add three hundred and forty-one miles of sidewalk along busy streets that don't have it. So, this is a report on our current assets, but they're assets we in P-Bot should have but don't.
That's a good point. And my question is really quick, and it reveals that I haven't read every single page of this document, which is that it sounds like half of the one-time money has been decided already that it will go to updating assets. Is that correct?
It's been committed to that category by Council policy, that we will spend half of the one-time monies on capital investment. But that, again, is a broad category of multiple bureaus that have capital investment needs.
Okay. And that amount of money at this time is about seven-point-five million, or ten million, or three-point-four million? I heard all those different numbers.
Right. So, it, yeah, the, the latest numbers from Josh just this morning, again, the, would mean about nine-point-eight million dollars. So, again, about nineteen-point-six is the one-time, so, by Council policy, nine-point-eight million dollars would be invested in, in maintenance and replacement, in transportation, parks, and emergency management. The three-point-four million, that's what CBO is proposing as an ongoing capital set aside.
Okay.
So, again, that would be setting, yeah, general fund ongoing funds that, again, would be available every year for these types of capital projects.
And is, are these going to go on a list? I mean, how are we going to know when we're making those, or when you are making those decisions? Is this going to be, is there going to be, is there a list, I mean, I saw a lot of lists, but is there a list that says, "We're ranking these, and these are the highest priority, and we want you to review it and pick the things that perhaps should go up from the list or down from the list"? And what, which particular list is that?
So, in your, in your, in your binder under the citywide issues, about five pages back, there is a sheet that looks like this. And this is the, again, it's the infrastructure project ranking summary sheet. So, these are the projects that were submitted by bureaus. We got just under thirty million dollars, twenty-nine-point-nine million dollars of, of general fund requests. And, and again, going through that, that scoring process, you can see the City Budget Office recommendations are the highlighted projects on the front page.
All right. And so, they're all mixed together, so they're not, they're not bureau-by-bureau, they're mixed together, and so, you've already gone fairly far in setting the rankings for these.
Yeah, so, so, right, we've worked with the asset managers to rank these projects. And again, this is intended to provide additional information to Council as they decide which projects to fund. Again, from an asset management perspective, these are the projects that ranked the highest of those submitted. of those submitted. So there's a couple caveats there.
Andrew, if I could follow up on that, how does that list then correlate to the capital projects list in the comp plan?
I think it will depend on whether any of those comp plan projects were submitted. So again, bureaus go through their own sort of list in terms of just to decide what to submit as part of this process. So they have their own, they have their own internal criteria in terms of what to bring forward. This is, but this $30 million is by no means inclusive of everything.
And a lot of the comp plan projects are bundled, so they are not at this level of project, much larger.
So just to summarize, we're going to get a five-year set of numbers so we can see how it's changed. And how do those, how do you account for the fact that during those five years, we're adding to the baseline of assets? So, for example, as we put a reservoir online, that bumps up the number of total assets and that also is obviously an asset in good condition because it's, we'll be able to see how both the numerator and the denominator changes?
Yeah, I hope so. I think that's going to be the challenge, though, both in terms of the universe of assets that we have online as well as just the definitions of what should be on this list and what condition it's in. But we will, we definitely have these reports going back five years. I think the question, we're just going to need to provide some information and context for each one of them.
Yeah. And by the way, just one other comment to my friend Steve Novick. You know, my first year on the job, we spent fighting off what was called a fight, a public fight over a water district. You may remember that. And at the heart of it was a claim that our prices were too high and was an effort by some industrial polluters to shift the cost from businesses to individuals. There was some focus group work done later in that fight. And one of the things that Davis Inhibits revealed was that, at least with utilities, price was not the first concern. The first concern was value, and then reliability, and then safety. Price became a proxy if people didn't know what they were getting for, they didn't understand what they were getting for. And if they were getting a steady diet of newspaper stories saying that what they were getting for it is a waterhouse, then that called into question the judgment in terms of our spending. But it was interesting. Value, safety, reliability, that's what people value most. They're willing to pay a fair price for that. And I think, if anything, what I've learned is that we in the utilities have to do a better job explaining the value proposition, with explaining to people what they're buying and what the trade-offs are. Now, that's easier said than done. I don't know how you do that unless we go on a spending spree, buy all the local media, and then just have a weekly column or piece. But we still have to explain the values proposition. And I think, frankly, the lack of drama last week was in part the result that outside of a political fight, I think people realize they have high-quality water that's a pretty good value. What they want to make sure is that we don't spend money in ways that are dumb. And I think the council has, in the past, sometimes made those kinds of judgments, and that's what gets us in trouble. And if we stop doing that, I think most people realize they get pretty good water at pretty good value. So that's my two cents.
Mayor, if I might, just two closing points. One is, I think we're kind of dancing around the issue that there's electricity, natural gas, water, sewer. We're used to those as being utilities. We've never talked about a transportation utility, and it sets up an entirely different fundamental way of how you fund an infrastructure service. And I don't know that any city has, but maybe they have, and it's something that...
Actually, 28 have.
Okay, yeah. And so it's something that we never put right out front, and we're always talking about how we have to compete for those resources with everything else around general fund. And then the other issue is on the capital set-aside funding. Although there was an attempt, and we're just learning how to do this, to use an equity lens, only 1% or 2% of the points for getting those projects funded were around equity and the equity lens. And so we may want to look at those criteria in the future.
I think that's a good point, although it was pointed out to me that each of the bureaus also have, at least mine do, have equity in their ranking system so that you may be getting a double dose of at least that criterion. And then, as Andrew pointed out, that's then up to the council to figure out, should some projects be moved up because of that.
Susan, we could use some help in thinking through how risk assessment and equity work together. So, for example, BES looks at where they're more likely to have catastrophic failure. And that, then, of course, you're going to want to look at an equity lens in some way. But sometimes the risk factors trump those other considerations. And frankly, from a customer point of view, I think people want to make sure that mains up and down Burnside are working and things of that nature. So how do you balance equity with bureaus that are doing largely risk assessment analysis?
Well, we've just begun to kind of look at how to do this, I think, and most of the bureaus are truly trying to figure it out. King County and Seattle have done a lot of work on it, and I think we're looking really closely at how they've done it. Obviously, there's major areas of failure, potential failure, that you're going to always put those things first. But having a new way of looking at it in terms of who is being affected, not just by geography, but by demographics.
So we need to move on, but I want to give Commissioner Saltzman the last word.
Well, I just had a question about this infrastructure sheet and the color coding. Does that mean the projects that are being recommended for funding are coded yellow?
Yes, that's right. So we just, again, we, yes. So these are the projects that the City Budget Office is recommending. And you'll note, we went pretty much straight down the list with one exception. You know, there was enough funding, you'll see that project number nine, I don't know if everyone has the list in front of them, there was two paving projects, one on East Burnside from 20th to 32nd, the other out on 122nd Avenue. There was enough funding to either do project nine and nothing below it, or to do project 10 and then the three sort of smaller projects beneath that. We came to the conclusion that we wanted to capture those three projects. And then the 122nd, there's also a safety project that PBO has made a request on that we were also recommending. So it seemed that there was some synergy out there in terms of doing that. PBO has actually raised the point that both of those projects are scalable. There may be, the East Burnside did rank more highly. So I think that's a question when they come up, you know, to sort of walk through those, that they may be able to do portions of each, and there may be good reasons, you know, again, to sort of take another look at that. But we pretty much went straight down the list.
Susan, thank you, you and your team of bureau managers for doing this work. And thank you all. Thanks very much. Okay, let's move on to the first of our bureau presentations. So Parks.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, members of the Budget Advisory Committee. My name is Mike Abate. It's a great honor to have responsibility for the people, the places, and the programs of Portland Parks and Recreation. I'm joined today by our finance manager on my right, Jeff Schaefer, and the Chair of the Portland Parks Board, Kathy Fong Stevens. Also joined by our valued labor partners, I saw Jerry Verhoff from Copia, Tim Heberman from Recreation, and then Scotty Fairchild and Scott Gibson of Labor's Local 483 in DCTU. Our senior management team is here as well, and many key staff, and members of our Budget Advisory Committee and the Parks Board. It's a great honor to lead off the Bureau Budget Presentation for this year's budgets. And in the spirit of collegiality with my fellow bureau directors, I will strive to keep the bar very low so that they can raise it on subsequent presentations. There are some new handouts that Jason Smith is handing out. This is an updated PowerPoint presentation that would be helpful for you to follow along in the presentation today. And I'm going to organize the presentation in three main parts. First, a bureau overview of what is Portland Parks and Recreation responsible for, talk about our budget development process, and then, thirdly, jump into the actual budget proposals themselves. And as Director Scott mentioned earlier, you've asked us to identify major challenges facing the bureau over this and coming years. And so we've organized a presentation of our requested budget packages in these areas of challenge. We'll also share our 2014 performance measures and describe how these requested packages could help improve our performance metrics. And after I conclude, I'll ask the Parks Board Chair, Kathy Fong Stevens, to share the perspective of the Parks Board, and as well as the Budget Advisory Committee, which advised Commissioner Fritz and myself on this budget and open it up for your questions. So quickly, an overview of the bureau. We're a bureau driven by vision, strategy, and performance metrics. From our Parks 2020 vision adopted by council in 2001 to our current strategic plan and our annual performance reports, these documents inform our budget development and the conversations we have with the community about people, places, and programs. Portlanders invest in Portland Parks and Recreation, mobilizing hundreds of full-time staff, thousands of part-time employees, and leveraging nearly half a million volunteer hours to take care of a number of things, including 212 developed parks, over 8,000 acres of natural areas, 2,000 community garden plots, 26 community school and art centers, 13 swimming pools, hundreds of sports fields and courts, playgrounds, five golf courses, five river beaches, and a racetrack. Not to mention 1.2 million public urban forest trees and 230,000 street trees. And in return for that investment, Portlanders gain a unique ROI, return on investment. They get opportunities to play, get healthy, and participate in community life. In the last year, we provided over 35,000 swim lesson registrations for youth who learn to swim, increasing their safety. 75,000 registrations for youth who learn teamwork and sportsmanship in sports leagues, camps, and other structured activities, not to mention the incredible health benefits for our kids. Over 20,000 registrations for people of all ages who learn to dance, make music, or create art. 350,000 youth and families who attended free summer playground activities, movies, and concerts as part of the Summer Free-for-All program. We have nearly 1,000 teens who develop life and work skills with our Junior Lifeguard, Recreation Leader, Eagle Golf Program, and Urban Naturalist programs, and issued over 100,000 fitness passes and classes purchased by people who were trying to stay and keep healthy. In addition, we served over 110,000 lunches to youth in the summertime. We're making good progress, yet we've identified four significant issues or themes that will direct the bureau now and in the next few years and which have guided the development of our requested budget. The first is equity and inclusion, and that's a lens through which Portland Parks and Recreation has long viewed all of our services, working toward providing access for everyone. We have requested resources to boost our effectiveness in specific strategic areas. The second is restoration of services. This is about providing stable, adequate funding for the day-to-day work of caring for and expanding responsibilities, providing equitably distributed programming, and meeting the growing community expectations for service from parks. And part of that restoration is looking backwards because in the five years of fiscal year 2009, 10 through 13, 14, Parks has taken cumulative cuts of about 17% of its general fund discretionary. Most of those cuts resulted in reductions in staff. And though we call it, I think Commissioner Fish coined the term "thinning the soup," it really affected people and created unsustainable workloads for many of our staff and supervisors. A third theme is the safety and security of our staff and our patrons. That's a high priority. And as we discussed last week with the council on the park, update on the Park Ranger Program, we've noticed an increase in service calls and security incidents in the last few years. And our requested budget includes requests for critical equipment and training towards this end. And our fourth and most significant budget issue is major maintenance. It's fortuitous that we follow on Susan Anderson's presentation on the infrastructure needs for the city because it certainly is our biggest need. This pie chart that you see in front of you indicates the funding we have in place to meet the major maintenance needs for the next 10 years. Through our data-driven asset management program, we've identified maintenance needs of about $35 million a year over the next 10 years, a total of about $350 million. We made incredible progress towards this this year, when 74% of Portlanders voted to approve the Parks Replacement Bond. Thank you, council, for your hard work on this behalf. Those dollars are to prevent closure and fund Parks' most urgent needs, but the $68 million bond will pay for about 19% of the identified major maintenance needs. That leaves grants and partnerships, which will fund probably another 7%, and the general fund is expected to fund 4% or so as we look forward. And so that leaves about 70% or $240 million of unfunded major maintenance over the next 10 years. In addition to unfunded maintenance over the next 10 years, we will need to spend nearly half a billion dollars in new facilities to meet the needs of the underserved communities or portions of the community in Portland, providing equity for all Portlanders. Our System Development Charge Program, which will come before the council in mid-April, is a vital part of helping to fund that growth capacity for the Parks Program. So throughout the presentation, we'll hear more about these significant budget issues and how our budget responds to them. And now a little bit about budget development. So the mayor's budget direction was clear. Budget asks should focus on three priority areas: equity and opportunity, emergency preparedness, and complete neighborhoods. Our four significant issues or challenges, we might call them budget themes, overlap with the mayor's priorities. Most of our proposals heavily overlap in the equity, equity and opportunity, and complete neighborhoods priorities, and many have underlying emergency preparedness implications as parks and community centers are expected to provide critical safe havens, communication centers, and gathering places during citywide emergency scenarios. In our budget development process, we engage the public in a variety of ways, including a Budget Advisory Committee with a diverse composition of community leaders, neighborhood representation, labor, other stakeholders, and our Portland Parks Board. They gave us more than 100 volunteer hours toward advising on the budget process. In addition, we held a public budget meeting specific to Parks on January 7th in southeast Portland, and over 100 Portlanders participated. And the meeting was reflective of our diverse community, with many people of color, immigrants and refugees, many of which were attending their very first public meeting. And then a new thing we did this year is establish an opportunity for people to comment on our budget through a special email feedback link, and we got over 1,000 comments on our budget, which I think was also very helpful. In your packet, you have a summary sheet. And so as I begin to discuss these themes, you'll have a short little sort of score sheet that you can keep track of. And you'll see that the items on the right-hand side that are shaded in green are those that the Budget Office has recommended for support. So our first issue is equity inclusion. We're going to start with that because we know that in this area, small strategic investments can leverage big gains for the community. Parks views all of its services through an equity lens and continues to work to ensure that all of our, all Portlanders have access. One of the ways that we do this is collect data on who we are currently serving. The slide that you see above shows a sample of race and ethnicity data that we recently started to track in our new PREP, which stands for Parks Race and Ethnicity Project Program. This data, which identifies people who've registered for courses at community centers, will help us to inform how successful or unsuccessful we are in providing programs and activities for all Portlanders' diverse communities. Other ways that we work towards ensuring access for all Portlanders include using the new equity assessment tool from Office of Equity and Human Rights to inform development of our budget proposals. Our Budget Advisory Committee had an introduction to that in our very first meeting and continually referred to that as the packages were being developed. We use race and income data to identify any disparate impacts related to capital projects, a little bit of what Commissioner Fritz mentioned a moment ago. We focus our outreach and public participation processes in communities of color on key projects, programs, and policies by using the city's public involvement standards. And we conduct focus groups and building relationships with members of underserved communities. We also are researching best practices for identifying customers. We also are researching best practices for identifying customers who self-identify as having a disability, and we actually have our own Parks Accessibility Advisory Committee that reviews our work in the formative stages and provides an outside perspective on the issues of barrier-free accessibility. So this next slide on equity inclusion compares Parks' workforce data for all our employees on the left to the census data for the city of Portland on the right. I apologize that the text is so small. Providing the opportunity to work is a key part of investing in the Portland community. We imply, employ over 3,000 individuals over the course of a year, including 457 full-time employees. To best serve our diverse community, our employees must reflect our local population, including our increasingly diverse youth population. Ensuring that both our customers and employees are representative of all cultures of Portland is a top priority for Parks. The proposals included in our requested budget are key to helping us achieve this goal. Though this, these pie charts are a snapshot from 2014, I would also like to discuss the trends we're creating in Parks. In 2011, 1011, about 24.5% of all Parks employees were identified as people of color or self-identified as people of color, non-white, or two or more races. So 24.5 back in 2010. Those are the non-purple slices of that pie. Last year, that had grown from 24.5% to 27.1% of our employees. And this number compares favorably with the 210, 2010 census, which identified Portland's population as being 27.8% non-white or two or more races. So we're making some progress, but we still have a ways to go. So in our budget, requested budget, we have several packages that relate to equity inclusion, including resources to leverage our newly-created Equity and Inclusion Manager that we added this past year. And we did that by reprioritizing existing resources, significantly boosting the Bureau's strategic efforts in this area. So of the packages that you see on the slide, packages three through six are about converting seasonal employees to full-time positions. Full-time work with benefits is a stabilizing force for families and our community, and Portland Parks has long relied on seasonal positions due to the nature of the work. But where work is truly year-long and full-time, we're trying to make a shift. There's no doubt that Portland Parks and Recreation will continue to need seasonal employees, particularly in the summer, but what we've found is that, that there is a fair amount of year-round work at various parts of the Bureau that is currently being handled by seasons. PK seven, the scholarship one, I'm going to discuss in, in greater detail in a second. PK nine, Parks for New Portlanders will provide more culturally responsive recreation services and activities, pay for increased mentoring, training, and employment of refugee and immigrant youth, and increase participation from underserved communities in the Parks proposal process. PK 12, Gateway Green will provide a key identified recreational need for the off-road cycling community, and it's located in East Portland, a significantly underserved portion of the city. This project and proposal leverages Metro grant funding, and if the package is funded, the number of park acres per resident will slightly increase in the area, the percentage of residents living within a half-mile will also increase, and percentage of residents rating proximity to Parks as good or very good in the annual survey will likely increase. PK 13 is an equity investment that'll better facilitate communication with limited English proficiency populations, coupled with training to help employees better serve these populations. This is similar to the package that we submitted, and wasn't funded last year when we were projecting creating the Equity and Inclusion Manager position, so it creates a program for our employees. PK 17, Off-Road Cycling Master Plan, that will help identify several sites in the city to build sustainable trails, access points, and facilities for off-road cycling. PK 18, Innovative Food Production. This effort would outline a pathway for Portlanders, especially those who need it most, to access a variety of city-owned property for various methods of food production.
Might just jump in there, because that's, it's different from the community garden approach. It's more, it's truly more of a community food production, so everybody farms, everybody plants, everybody weeds, everybody harvests together. And so this project would be for a consultant to look at where could we do that and prepare the way for helping people grow healthy food in their own neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to talk for a second about scholarships. The Parks Scholarship Program discounts fees to make recreation programs more affordable for low-income individuals. The program primarily serves youth and provides discounts to over 3,000 young Portlanders annually. However, in our budget process, there's no dedicated funding for scholarships. Rather, fees are simply waived for qualifying individuals, and PP&amp;R absorbs those scholarships within its existing budget allocations. Over the past seven years, we've averaged about $437,000 a year in scholarships. But the graph that shows that the average is not really the story. I'm sorry, let me restate that. But the average is not really the story, as you'll see, as you see in this graph. The graph shows that requests for support from the scholarship program has increased significantly in recent years, putting a strain on the Bureau's ability to continue to cover the existing number of individuals enrolled in the programs. At the same time, previous councils have endorsed a cost recovery policy that has increased reliance on fee-generated program income. So this creates a tension between two policy objectives that is not sustainable. The more we become dependent on fee revenue, the less equitable our programs become. And since there's no dedicated funding, and in the spirit of fiscal responsibility and transparency, we'll continue to bring scholarship program performance and budget requests to council for guidance. In other words, I believe it's fiscally prudent to identify an amount each year that will be available for scholarships and indicate this amount in our budget and keep you updated on the needs of our community. In the past year, Parks has engaged staff and volunteers and customers in an effort to begin updating our existing scholarship policy. The policy changes aim to allow more flexibility for qualifying customers by providing them with an annual fee waiver credit of up to $200 per individual to be used at their discretion. We're also simplifying the qualification criteria to more closely match the public schools' free and reduced lunch program qualifications.
Mike, can I just stop there for a second? Can you give us just a quick primer on, on who and how those scholarship decisions are made? How does, how does a kid find out they're eligible for a scholarship? Who says, "Oh, I've got one for you"? Tell us a little more about programmatically how that works on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you, Mayor. Good question. It generally happens at the community center level. So community centers vary in terms of both their cost recovery goals and their, and their scholarship needs. So it is promoted at the community center level. People can come in and apply. With the new Active Net program that allows online access, there's also an opportunity to apply through, for scholarships there. But generally, the, the way that most of them happen traditionally is at the community center level. As you can imagine, with 13 community centers, this can lead to some inconsistencies. And one of the things that is, I think, important for us is to create some standardization in both process and application of the scholarships.
How are they allocated?
How are they allocated? By fee waivers, by discounts.
How does, how many does each community center director know that they can distribute?
It is based on requests and need, and has not, to, to this date, we haven't established a target. And so that's one of the reasons that I believe that we should take a hard look at our scholarship program and make a conscious decision on how much we allocate each year.
A question from you before we let Carl get a word in edgewise here is, how many, I'm sorry, break these down.
I could, Mayor. I don't have those numbers with me, but I'd be happy to get back to you with a breakdown of the past year by community center.
The question I have is, how do you measure the effectiveness of the scholarships? In other words, back in 2010, you had 430, $4,000 worth, and it's increasing to 624 now. What's the result? How do you measure that the effectiveness of the scholarships?
That's also a good question. I think the way that we measure it right now is number of participants in, in programs. One of the things we're trying to do is, especially in youth, is to get youth physically active and engaged. And when we find that, that fees are a burden, we offer a discount. By the way, we don't offer 100% discounts, so we have a, a partial discount program. So the, I'd say the clearest way is to just identify how many participants that we, that we have.
Can you give an estimate as to how much somebody has to put in to, how much of a discount do they get? About 90% is it, did I understand?
I think it's up to, up to 50%.
Up to 50%?
Right.
So they have something in the game of their own money, their own effort to be there, so they will show up. I'm afraid if somebody gets a discount, they don't show up, that's all.
Right. I'd also say, though, that for many of our families, a 50% discount, or requiring to even pay 50% of the fees is still a barrier, and so those, those folks don't participate in the programs.
So the PK seven...
Then can you give the discount to somebody else that will? So we get a higher percentage, more, more people in the program? If somebody gets it and they can't afford it, can you then say, "Okay, you're not participating, so we can give it to somebody who will"?
Oh, yeah. That's, that's the way it works. Unfortunately, that person that couldn't afford it is not participating.
Right.
I understand that.
Just to be clear, we don't currently have a scholarship pot of money that, when it's gone, it's gone. It's at the discretion of the community center. And this PK seven request is 160,000 to establish an actual program, to either have a consultant or a staff person hired that would manage this and figure out the better, more precise answers to some of your questions, and also to encourage more families who cannot afford the fees at all to be able to participate. And then the remaining 200,000 would be actually setting up a pot of money that, when it's determined, as Director Abadi said, by free or reduced school lunch criteria or other factors, that there actually would be an amount of money that would be dedicated to offset the council's previous direction, that rates are supposed to cover, or fees are supposed to cover, a lot of the cost of the programming.
Mike, how is this scholarship program different from the, the card that Nike used to fund, the access card?
Commissioner, I'm not sure I can answer that question. I don't know if, if any of, Jason, do you have a?
That's, that's an outside contribution to support our scholarship program. So that's the sort of contribution we're looking for, is, is private business to offer up a program like that. It fed into our self-existing program.
And the other discussion that we had at the Budget Advisory Committee meeting and with the Parks Board is that potentially as a partnership with the Parks Foundation to help garner those private donations, you need a dedicated staff person to be able to do that, and that's part of what this request is also.
Can I ask a quick question? In, in terms of the, the $200,000 to support the scholarship, given this, this graph, you're saying in 2014, you know, the approximate value of scholarships was 620,000?
Right.
And so just even with the 200,000, I assume you wouldn't reduce your scholarships to 200,000, you'd keep them at this higher level?
Thank you for clarifying that, Andrew, and that's right. So what we did is, we looked at the average, which I mentioned was $437,000, and we would continue to fund, discount, if you will, our fees $400,000, but I would like to, over maybe a three-year period, change that to it's an actual allocation of our budget. So the 437 plus 200 is 630, which is close to what we experienced this year.
Commissioner Fritz, can I just follow up on one question? I know we have, time is short, so we're not going to spend the entire time on this one item, but I remember when I was the commissioner in charge, the African-American Healthcare Coalition had a program funded by a grant that allowed its members to get a discounted rate. And one of the theories was, by getting people, particularly who were at higher risk of certain kinds of preventable illnesses, into our community centers, we could bring down their health costs. So it seemed at the time that there was a great opportunity to partner with healthcare facilities and insurers to bring down the cost, get people in with all the obvious benefits. How does that fit into your long-term thinking?
Well, absolutely. It's about healthy parks, healthy Portlanders. Maybe Director Abadi could talk about our RX Play program that we have now.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. For us, health is a key determinant, and we are looking in our strategic plan, we focus on community health and the ways that we can intersect with healthcare providers and healthcare organizations. RX Play is a pilot program that we have utilized where a doctor evaluating a, an adolescent and determines that that child has levels of obesity or inactivity can actually prescribe, write a prescription for them to come to a community center and sign up for a class that would get them playing basketball or some sort of active recreation to address that. I think that's a phenomenal program. There are some other models. I think it's been partially funded by the National Recreation and Parks Association over the, over the past few years, but I think we continue to look for ways to sink in health, provide, health, healthy communities with Parks and Recreation.
So can I just add one thing? Mike, I'm interested in the fact that my Medicare provider pays for my monthly gym membership. That encourages me to go, reduces its cost.
Right.
You know, I'm trying to, it, it, there seems like there's a correlation here between medical providers and insurers and kids. I mean, it's not a big leap for me to think that they might pay for part of the program if the kids show up. Have you, I mean, have you, you've thought about it?
I agree.
My guess is you haven't really pursued that.
We, we are going to. As a matter of fact, I was discussing Miami Dade as a park system, has a great relationship with the State Department of Health and University of Miami, and they have some models that I've been looking at in the last couple of weeks on ways of engaging the healthcare community to sort of expand this idea that these kind of health programs could happen in community centers or in parks.
And when I look at the, the proposal, it looks to me like the salary's about $106,000 if you take out benefits for this consultant. Is there any effort to look for a volunteer who has lots of experience that would do something like this for nothing? I mean, there's a lot of smart people in this city who have a commitment to this. It just seems to me to pay 100, you could take that $100,000, put it back in the scholarships, now you have another third, and you get somebody who's got the experience, who's willing to donate their time.
I, I would, I would welcome that. If you've, if you've got some folks to follow up with, I'd love to do that. This could be, it could be a staff person who has a community health background, or it could be a consultant, but if there are volunteers out there that'd like to assist, I, I believe that there will be a lot of coordination with OHSU and Legacy and Providence and Kaiser, but you know, a, a key person that can really spend 40 hours a week on this is, would, would love to find that person.
Just to be clear, this is a one-time request.
Yes.
Some of our other one-time requests are not really one-time requests, but because of the requirement to cut, propose cuts, we, we were not able to do that. But this one really is for a project, for somebody to work full-time, to look at all of the issues that have been brought up here. So that's the core of the request here is the 160,000. Dante, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just, maybe I missed the answer, Mike, but just to put a face to this, how many youth are we actually talking about when we talk about the, the number in terms of scholarships? And do we know either generically, maybe age or demographic data, and/or is there a particular area in the city that a majority tend to come from?
Dante, I'd say that it's, it's well over 1,000, and I can get you more details about, maybe in conjunction with the mayor's question about where scholarships break down by community center, maybe give you some hard numbers on, on the numbers of youth and, oh, I'm sorry. Is it 3,000 that?
3,000.
Yes, I'm sorry, 3,000 scholarships. Yep, yep.
Just one question, and that is, with the increase between 2013 to 2014, approximately 23%, have we been able to capture a corresponding or close to a corresponding number of new clients, i.e. through the scholarship program?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm thinking about the question. It's, it's, it's very difficult to gauge that. I'd like to go back to our community center folks and, and ask that specific question. Yep.
Good discussion. Let's let you move on.
Okay. Thank you.
It is okay to interrupt you in the middle of the presentation, but I'll, I'll still hold you back a little bit.
So let's see, I believe we're on to the next...
Two more of our... Two more of our budget themes and the challenges. One being restoration of services, and the second being safety and security. So here's a performance metric, an important quality of service metric, is the percentage of Portland residents who rate the overall quality of parks as good or very good. This measure is tracked through the city auditor's annual community survey. Currently, 85% of Portlanders rate their parks as good or very good. Our 2020 vision goal is established at 90%. So we are high at 85%. That's not bad for a government agency, but we aspire to be even higher.
Mike, it's worth noting that we were given a document earlier by Andrew that listed trend lines. And so it says that from August '09 through 2014, 15, only the two bureaus that actually took the most cuts in terms of discretionary and overhead were parks and fire and rescue from the general fund. And so that's a significant factor. And yet, in your PowerPoint, you show that during the same period of time, you maintained or were slightly above 85% ratings with the public. So that's pretty extraordinary when you had fewer resources. And so how do you account for that?
Commissioner, our employees work really, really hard. And this issue of restoration of services is something that is on my mind, because our folks, particularly, you know, not last year, but have had their responsibilities. I've got people who are responsible for 30 or 40 parks, maintenance in 30 or 40 parks. It's hardly sustainable. So I give the credit to our employees and want to do right by them.
I agree with that assessment. Our employees work way, very, very hard, and many of them get paid very, very little, as we know from our $15 an hour discussion. I want to draw your attention to page eight of 28 in the City Budget Office analysis, which shows the percentage of households rating the quality of parks as good or very good by Neighborhood Coalition. And it's starkly obvious that in the East Portland Neighborhood Organization area, its satisfaction is only 68%. So... And the reason is, as we saw from the earlier map showing whether we have parks and where we don't, that despite Commissioner Fish's heroic efforts over the course of the recession, we are still way behind in providing services to East Portland. And indeed, as we're now moving into the discussion of safety and security, as you heard in the ranger discussion last week, we have no dedicated rangers in East Portland. So that's part of our ask.
Okay.
I could just ask one question about, on the issue of cuts. I think that some people reading the materials might be confused about, we're discussing cuts, but according to the City Budget Office, the base general fund budget for parks has gone up since 2009 by over 30%. And I think that there is an answer reconciling that, but I think it may be worthwhile to put it on the table.
Commissioner, I may pass it over to my finance manager, but the actual dollar amount is not equivalent to the cost of delivering services. And so, yes, budgets have gone up, there have been COLA adjustments, a number of things that have not put boots on the ground. And so a big way of explaining this is that we have reduced many, many positions over the years, and in addition, we got ONM additions. So as you know, you're... We talk about that quite a bit. When we brought a new park online, we've gotten additional funding in our CAL target for that operations and maintenance. But on the other side of the ledger, there were cuts from the general fund. So that's a part of the explanation. Anything else, Jeff?
Yeah, the first year on that chart had a significant $5.4 million backfill for our levy from 2002. The council spent a couple of years saving up for that. So that was a big infusion into our budget. 22% of that 33 was that one year alone from backfill of that levy. So the service level didn't change with that 22%. And as Mike mentioned, the $3.5 million of ONM and some transfers of special appropriations over the years and fountains and other assets of kind of increased general fund actual dollars, but not necessarily service.
So if you started the clock in '09, '10, instead of '08, '09, you'd have very different numbers.
So when the levy expired, council made a commitment to make up for at least some of that with new general fund.
Kind of a glide path down, yes. Okay. Next slide is, we also track the percentage of residents that rate the quality of our community centers and programs as good or very good. In 2014, 74% of these services were rated that way. Our target's to increase that to 80%. And we believe the following proposals will help us achieve those two goals. PK one and two are linked together. So in the 2013-14 budget, council asked parks to utilize some contingency ending fund balance from a 2002 parks levy to provide two years' bridge funding for several core programs, including recreation programming at Selwood Community Center, natural areas maintenance, aquatics programming at Buckman Pool, and central services maintenance positions, until future general fund ongoing resources could bridge the gap. These packages wanted to restore and adequately fund services and programs that are highly valued and supported by the community, including those mentioned above, and full funding for operations of the decorative and interactive fountain maintenance program. PK 14, Summer Free-for-All. This package funds the following program elements. Mobile recreation program that serves up, that would allow us to serve up to 20 sites per week and 4,500 children each summer, primarily in outer east in our most parks-deficient areas. Current budget, our current budget allows for about five sites per week. This would add another 15 sites.
Before you move on, Mike, I just want to go back to the fountain issue, because when the Budget Committee was discussing our priorities, clearly the council for the past six years has said that, yes, Selwood Community Center and Buckman Pool are a priority, and so is natural area maintenance. So we didn't want to offer that up as a cut. We were, parks was assigned fountain maintenance from the Water Bureau, which is another reason that the parks budget went up, because that came with some resources. It didn't actually cover the entire cost of fountain maintenance. This one-time package, which the Budget Office is recommending, is the correct number for what it actually costs to maintain the fountain. And this is one, Mayor, where actually we would like this to be ongoing rather than one-time, because the previous services that I mentioned, I believe, are more core to mission for Portland Parks and Recreation. The fountain maintenance is something that's a citywide priority, and so I would put that on your list, my request list, anyway.
So do we have the summer free lunch program, that gap between late August and Labor Day? We have that plugged permanently?
Yes, we do, Commissioner. Thank you.
Is that under your free-for-all, or it's just...
It's in the summer free-for-all program, but it's, we've considered it funded.
Okay, great.
So just a quick question from Andrew. So CBO is recommending PK two, but it's listed as one-time, even though Commissioner Fritz has clearly identified that it's an ongoing expense. So is the expectation just that we'd be back here next year asking for more one-time money?
It was recommended by, or it was requested by the Bureau as one-time funding, so again, we're recommending in favor of their request. One of the larger issues that I think we're going to be working with the mayor on in his proposed budget is making sure that we don't add to the serial one-time list, so that we're not funding ongoing programs with one-time resources, that to the extent there are, to the extent we're using one-time resources, they're truly going to one-time needs, pilot projects, you know, things that are going to be short-term in nature and will end. So I think this will be a conversation.
You know, on this topic, Mayor Bloomberg and other New York mayors have been able to get nice, rich people in New York to fund parks assets of citywide significance in New York. And it strikes me that these fountains are high-profile things, that it would be nice if we could find nice, rich people to fund here. So I would suggest that the mayor, who's, I know, has spent time with Mayor Bloomberg, catch up with him and ask, how do you find those rich people and get them to fund parks assets?
And we do have a good set of partners, especially for the Halpern Fountains, and they're going to be doing a local improvement district to help maintain them. It's not going to cover the cost of all of the decorative fountains. And we have a slim number of philanthropic, rich people in our town, and they tend to get asked over and over again for various priorities, and so I don't think we can rely on...
Unfortunately, they're all moving to Vancouver, because they don't want to pay the street fee, Steve, so we're going to... We'll offer them a bargain.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the summer free-for-all would also expand our lunch sites and...
Mike, that's additional money? So you're... This is money above and beyond the $100,000 meals that you serve?
Yes.
This would allow you to... This is one of the shining programs of this city. And since hunger, I believe, Mayor, is one of our three priority items, and this is not just a food program, this is where stressed-out families in the summer can drop a kid that then has got an adult supervising them, doing healthy activities and a healthy meal. Just personally, for me, this is the essence of what a park system's all about. So this would allow us to expand the number and then contract with more food service providers to get more meals?
Commissioner, actually, it would allow us to provide about the same level of service that we did last year. So one of the challenges that we're having is on the private fundraising side. So this would protect most of the lunch sites, with the exception of the playgrounds. The playgrounds is an expansion, would allow us to expand to the east side.
Has there been a decline in federal funds available through the entitlement program? Or is that about the same?
No, I don't think so. It's just the fact that we're, you know, we're leveraging about five to one private dollars to local dollars. We also have other funding needs other than summer free-for-all, and so our staff that does fundraising has been stretched. I'll move to the next one. The theme is safety and security. As you know, we have a pretty comprehensive emergency management and security program, and we're working closely with the Bureau of Emergency Management, other agency partners, to improve our plans and practices. And this overlaps with the mayor's emergency preparedness priority. And so we're requesting a critical investment in public safety for our community centers, including automatic lockdown equipment, which we've piloted successfully at one community center, security cameras, and other equipment and staff training that will enable safer and more effective emergency responses. As much as our schools, our public schools, must be equipped and trained to protect our children in a changing world, so must we in our community centers.
And this one, I believe, is a crucial public safety investment. It is a truly one-time investment. And I've been shocked since becoming Commissioner in Charge of Park, the number of text messages I get reporting on incidents in and around our community centers and parks. They are places where people gather, and so they're also places where things happen. So this is a big concern for me.
I'm going to try to go quickly through. Our final theme is major maintenance, and that's something you're well familiar with. Many of our budget requests are for major maintenance. The bond accomplishes about 19% of our need, and the facilities condition index measures asset deficiencies at our facilities and pools based on data gathered through an annual inspection program. And so the graph that you see shows 7.5% of facilities and pools as deficient as of 2014, resulting in an overall fair condition for all of our assets. Our goal is to bring facilities rating for the overall system into the good category, or less than 5% of our assets being deficient. So that's why, this is one of those examples where a high number is not a good thing. High number is a bad thing. We would like to reduce the, increase the condition index of our assets.
Mike, can I ask you a question related to major maintenance, which frankly, I don't expect immediately the answer to, but, and it's a question that I've been meaning to ask a variant of to PBOT, but I'm afraid of the answers, I haven't asked them. But when you have a big major maintenance backlog, and you don't anticipate getting enough money to cover it, could you do an analysis of, if we will only ever have the amount of money we have now, what facilities could we afford to maintain, and what facilities should we write off because we can't afford to maintain them all? Like with PBOT, I thought of asking them that question, and I'm afraid the answer would be, well, if we're only going to have the money we have now, the only streets we'll be able to maintain are Division and Burnside.
Yes.
Are you looking at parks in a situation where, if you had to assume you'll never get more money, the only facilities you could maintain are the Selwood Community Center and the Buckman Pool, or something like that?
Yes. Commissioner, as a matter of fact, those kinds of analyses are what have led us in previous years to suggest Selwood and Buckman as closures. And we've looked at both the consequence, and I think the next slide is going to show a little graph that reflects the asset management strategy, the consequence of failure, which in our case means a lot, or is measured a lot by how many visits are there in a particular facility, and then the probability of failure being the vertical axis. That kind of analysis is what led us to say, you know, we have some facilities where, if we had to reduce, they're serving fewer people. However, previous councils have, you know, made it clear that they've not wanted to close those things. So that's the, I think, the challenge that probably faces both bureaus equally.
And I would say that the meeting where I had to go to the Metropolitan Learning Center, PTSA meeting, and tell them that, no, I don't have any money to rebuild Couch Park, was one of the most unpleasant experiences of my life. So I would not want to be the Commissioner in Charge of Parks if we were to propose closing facilities and having to go to neighborhoods and say, sorry, you're out of luck. And I'm not sure how we would pick which neighborhoods to tell, you're out of luck.
So I won't go into the details on this chart, but you'll see that in the upper-right-hand corner is a red dot, the others are blue. The red is just highlighting this particular budget package. This is a graph of, a scatter diagram of HVAC system, ventilation systems, in our major buildings and pools. If you are in the upper right, that's bad, and so that's a high consequence of failure and a high probability of failure, and that's where Mount Scott Community Center and Pool falls. I want to also mention, just, you know, when you think of Mount Scott, you know that community center, it's fairly old, been around a long time, but two, there's two blue dots fairly close to that. That's East Portland Community Center and Southwest Community Center. And why they're there is their ventilation systems are 17 and 18 years old. They're expected to last 20 years. So even some of our newer facilities are, have components that are approaching the end of their life. Next slide. Using similar asset management principles and criteria, as Andrew mentioned, a citywide ranking of infrastructure projects was completed. This ranking of all city facilities, not just parks, is indicated in parentheses on these charts. For example, the citywide ranking of infrastructure projects identified the Charles Jordan Community Center as the city's number-one maintenance priority. We've included major maintenance needs that have long been visible to the community that we serve, items like failed lighting and electrical service at Scavone Stadium and the Mount Scott ventilation system. But there's other critical needs that include the unseen, the leaking Lake Zither at the Lonsu Chinese Garden, as well as failed culverts and needed restoration in Forest Park. PK 20 and 21 are two packages, you see they're not ranked, that will help us take care of a non-capitalizable asset, ecological health of the vegetation in our natural areas. And since they can't be capitalized, they were not eligible for ranking.
In the renewed Forest Park, the City Budget Office is recommending only part of the funding, and I'll remind the council that it is on our legislative priorities and that we're asking the state for $2 million, and potentially, eventually, for $20 million. So this is one where the investment now would potentially have great leveraging opportunities.
Since our budget was submitted February 2nd, two items have developed, have also developed that Commissioner Fritz and I would like to bring to the council's attention. First, last week, you received a report on the state of the ranger program. Security Manager Galena Burley and Hassan R. Three described the inequity of resources for rangers on the east side of the city. We believe that we should add four two-person teams to cover the Springwater Corridor, North Portland, and East Portland, along with a ranger supervisor and a dispatcher. The cost for that is $768,000. And secondly, in January of this year, the city implemented Title XI, the new tree code. A key component of that effort was enhanced customer service. As a result, we now have urban forestry professionals at the permit center on the 1900 building, available to answer questions, provide over-the-counter tree permits, review development applications, and operate a new customer service hotline, 823-Tree. The good news is that service to Portlanders is greatly improved. I spent a day in the customer service center and was delighted to hear from customers who had come in and had their answers, questions answered quickly, and we're very grateful for that. However, the call volume, number of visits to the permit center, and the time required to address each inquiry has greatly increased since this time last year. Based on the level of staffing that council authorized, Commissioner Fritz and I believe that additional staff are needed as soon as possible in order to deliver on our promise to the community. We need one... We need one additional tree tech at the permit center and one additional urban forestry supervisor overseeing Title 11 outreach and training. The cost is $270,000.
And we'll circulate those requests to the council offices. As you remember, we were all required to put our budgets in on February 2nd, so we had only had 32 days of implementation of the tree code at that time, and we weren't prepared to figure out what we, back up, back in 2013, when we funded it, you'll recall that we asked for more staff and were directed by council to pare down that number. So we've been managing, but especially when we have a weekend like the one we just had with lots of tree failures and such, we have been pulling urban forestry staff off other assignments in order to work on the tree code, and there's a limit to the number of hours that we can have these professionals work.
As I close, I'd like to thank the council for their strong support of the people, the places, and the programs of Portland Parks and Recreation. Your leadership enabled us to pass a badly needed bond, and you've shown strong support for both repairing our aging system and ensuring that all Portlanders have access to a park, a community center, a pool, a natural area. In the past year, I've had the opportunity to discuss parks issues with parks directors from Chicago, Miami, Los Angeles, Austin, among others. The support for parks that our community and our elected officials demonstrate on a daily basis makes us the envy of the nation. The women and men of Portland Parks and Recreation thanks you for your encouraging support. The Parks 2020 Vision established an advisory board for the bureau, the Portland Parks Board. This group has served as the eyes and ears of our community, advising the Parks Commissioner and myself on a wide variety of topics, including the recently passed Smoke and Tobacco-Free Parks Initiative. I want to thank the Parks Board for their volunteer service, their hard work, and their wisdom, and ask the Chair of the Board, Kathy Fong-Stevens, to share a few remarks.
Great, thank you. I echo Mike's thanks for support of parks and the programs that we have going, and for recognition of the needs, and also for passage of the bond. Very much appreciate that. And I have the pleasure of saying that this year's Budget Advisory Committee, which I chaired also, involved about 30 people plus an extraneous, an additional process of involving others. And our, we were united in our support of what Commissioner Fritz and Mike Abate brought to the city council as far as recommendations, and I'll tell you that that's not always the case. And I think this is my fourth year, maybe my third, and there have been disagreements in the past, different priorities. This year, we're very pleased to be able to support the packages that were brought forth. And part of the reason for that, I have to say, is because the Commissioner, Mike Abate, this director, and several staff members were at every single Budget Advisory Committee meeting, and also are involved in the Parks Board meetings as well. And so the spirit of collaboration was very high. And I think the only thing that I would say to add is that we have a couple of prioritized ongoing packages that we would like to recommend, but we're not included in this, partly because we really did not want to have the case of ongoing budget requests being required, like a similar cut, because we wanted to keep existing core services. But if ongoing budget funds become more available, we would like to look at youth and community investments, such as expanding the grunt program and the IFCC staff, and also rangers and gang outreach staff, and providing more support for that. But that, again, we did not want to recommend those at the expense of existing core services. So again, I appreciate your support and recognition of the parks' budget and the parks' programs.
Thank you, Kathy. Thanks for your service. So questions for Mike, Jeff, Kathy, other follow-up requests?
I have questions.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I, partly, I just want to thank you. It was so gratifying to look at these maps that I had requested, that we have these geographic map, well, of course, all maps are geographic, but, that show that the spending in East Portland, especially for capital improvements, has gone up dramatically. In fact, we're the high spenders, yay. And then, but still, you're not spending as much on programs in East Portland. I imagine that is because there are not enough parks out there. So thank you, thank you, and yet, we are going to still keep asking until we are equal. And the next park on the list is Park Lane Park. It's a hugely high priority in East Portland, and it's right in the center of things. So thank you. All of the packages that you requested under equity, many of them are, will benefit East Portland. I support them all, summer free-for-all programs. I used to be a board member for Park Rose. Parks is often doing, is working hand-in-hand with schools to help kids, and, you know, our kids are our future, and parks can have a huge, those park programs can have a huge impact on children, especially in the summertime. Now, one of the things that I was looking at are some of your instruments here, your new instruments, this dashboard, and I know it's brand-new, right? We didn't have this last year. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so equity is your most important issue, and yet, I don't see an equity measure on your index. So I would, on your dashboard, so I would love to see that, and consider that. Brand-new dashboard, I'm sure that you haven't had a chance to work it out completely, but for me, some kind of an equity measure as a key performance measure, and I would urge you to consider it as a children's measure on there, too. Recreation, I don't see a recreation measure on your dashboard. I see this thing, and of course, I'm going to make a joke, and everybody will hate me for it, who works in this area, but your second measure is about weeds, right? So I'd rather that your second measure was about children. So think about that. If this is, if this dashboard is going to be an important measure, it should really measure what you guys do. And then I'm looking at this, and, great, I'm glad that you're measuring, but I can't tell anything from this measure, except that you do, you do serve all Portlanders, and I appreciate that. But I'd like to see a measure that showed the percentage of these different groups that you served. So, for example, 7.7% of, or let's just, let's go with one Asian, 7.3 Asian. How many Asians are there in Portland? So are we serving a lot of Asians, or are we, you know, or are we serving only some? So this unfortunately doesn't tell me very much. So I just want to point out a few things like that and just make sure that, because you don't want to spend time on stuff that doesn't tell you anything.
So let me respond to several points. I think you make some good points. Katie, what I'd like to do is to give you a copy, get you a copy of our entire 2014 performance report, which has all of our performance measures. And then, I don't know, Andrew, if you and Ryan want to address why, why you chose these particular performance measures, and what it showed.
Sure, so Katie, I think you're actually exemplifying one of the great things about the performance dashboards, and that's that they're there to spark more questions. And what I would say is that we worked a lot with the bureau to identify what the key performance measures would be, trying to capture measures that would track the bureau's core services. I think what you're talking about, you know, like right now, is the service being delivered as access to parks and recreation centers. What you want to know, though, is like, who's having that access? And as best practice in performance management is to not just, to look at the top tier of the measure, but is to look at sort of like the drill down after you get, after you've looked at that top tier of the measures. So we know, like, right now, that 70% of Portland residents are within three miles of community center. Your question, I think, then, is who are those residents that are within that, that are being, within that three miles of the community center? You're asking the demographic and equity impact of access to community centers.
I am, and actually, what I'm asking is, who's using those, not if they live there, but who's using that?
Exactly.
And that's one of the reasons that we began the collection of data, Katie, about a year ago. We didn't have any data about who was using, so all we, using our facilities are community centers. So all we had to look at was the census, and that was the community. And we said, well, that doesn't identify where there may be gaps. So if we, for example, are in a neighborhood that has a high Asian population, and yet we find that, you know, only half that percentage is using our community centers, then it's informing us on maybe we should be changing our program. So that's why we started that prep program, to really sort of zoom in on who we are serving, and how does that compare to our potential market.
One more illumination of this, and I think it would be good for you to see that full analysis, but maybe if you could spend a minute, Dante, and explain how the bureau used the budget equity tool, and that might be a good lens to keep looking at each of the, how the budget, how the bureaus have approached that this time around.
Sure, thank you. Probably in the packet, at the end of their documents, is a budget equity assessment tool that each of the bureaus had to do. And within that, they broke it down and had to answer questions regarding the demographics of those who use their services, identifying populations impacted, potential positive impacts and potential negative impacts. And so in the tool, they've broken it down, African-American, Latino, Bhutanese, East African, Somali, and so on. And so they have done an evaluation on various populations geographically, as well as demographically, looking at some of the GIS mapping that BPS has created to detail who lives where in this city. And so they have, in fact, taken, I think, a very good effort at taking a look at who is specifically impacted in the use of their programs.
Okay. If I could comment on that, it was really interesting to me. Last year was my first Budget Advisory Committee process with Portland Parks and Recreation. This was the second. Last year, we did use the budget tool, the equity tool, and there was a lot of discussion on what does this mean, and we don't really understand. This year, our Equity and Inclusion Manager, Art Hendricks, gave us a training at the Budget Advisory Committee about equity, and then at each meeting, a reminder about those kinds of things. And the quality of the discussion on equity issues was completely different from last year. It was excellent. I will say, however, that the piece that's maybe not as robust yet is about people with disabilities, that we look at geography, we look at race, we have huge challenges in Portland Parks and Recreation with accessibility, and that's, again, something that's a little more difficult to highlight in a performance dashboard, and something that we'll be asking the Commission on Disability and our own Accessibility Commission, Committee to look into.
Thank you, and I appreciate that there's a lot of work being done in this area, and I was looking at the equity lens, but I think it's, and it's brand-new, again, I would like to see more measure in it, less verbs, you know, verbiage. And I think if you've got something that's called a dashboard, that means that you're going to be looking at what, how parks is doing. And so people are going to want to know that, that you're active in this area, and if your dashboard doesn't show anything about equity, or children, or your programs, your programs are a key part of your, so anyway, I'm going to keep looking at these dashboards because I think that, you know, a dashboard is something you look at first. And so I want to, I think that, when I look at it first, I want to see that.
Don?
Mike, three observations that may turn into questions. On your front page, you say, you show that you want an increase of 25 FTE. In the back of your package, under the requested budget packages, it shows an increase of 14. I'm betting that the difference is your operations and management staff that you want to add 11?
Yes.
Okay, are they not included here because it was, what's the reason?
I'm not quite sure.
Okay, enough said.
It's a technical package.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Because I have not much to do, I went through your entire budget package online and read everything. One thing that struck me, moving from the east coast, and I'm a golfer, there were two golf courses in the county near Annapolis, Maryland, where I live. The cost to play those golf courses were $100. These are public courses. I came out here, and of course, I'm in heaven because of the public courses owned by the city. Number of rounds played in the United States have dropped drastically over the last 10 years. Thousands of golf courses closed. 97%, 7% of those closures are public and municipal courses, and yet, you've been able to maintain that. So thank you very much. It looks like you're going to have about 400,000 rounds this year, as you did the last couple of years. When I tee off in the morning at 8:00, which I am, it's going to cost me $19 as a senior. What struck me was if you just added $1 to that round, you would make 400,000. It looks like the golf courses are going to lose $300,000 this year. You cover that loss, you have an extra $100,000, plus the $300,000 that you wouldn't have to pay, and you can do those park rangers in East Portland and some other stuff, and I pay an extra dollar. So I pay $20 instead of 19, instead of 100. I'm more than willing to do that, and I can't imagine any golfer not willing to pay one more dollar to play golf on a great course in a beautiful city and support other, so I would ask you to think about that.
Donald, can I just make a comment on that? Because I could forward to you the emails we got the last time that was suggested, and this is a, an important conversation because golf is an enterprise bureau. Golf is an enterprise section of a bureau, meaning it is, it has a self-contained budget, and it covers its costs, and the last time-
But online, it looked to me like it was going to lose $300,000.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that this has been floated in the past, that they put a surcharge on fees to cover something that's outside of golf, and it, we'll forward, we'll certainly forward you all the emails, but-
You don't need to do that.
No, no, he was. He was suggesting a dollar surcharge to cover a non-golf service. That is a, it happens to be an idea that, conceptually, I support. It has, it provokes very strong feelings from the fiduciary board that governs the golf enterprise business and the customers. I just wanted to put that out there. But I think the most important part of your comment is that it's still a relative, it's good value to play in all golf courses, and it is a way of raising revenue, it just provokes very strong feelings when it's, when it's come up before, so I just wanted to-
Well, to me, coming from a private industry, I mean, the golf court is an asset of the city, just like a parking space in the city, and they ought to be valued as an asset of the city. So, anyway.
And maybe we can look into a scholarship program there. I know that the hour that was allocated to Portland Parks is up. I just wanted to check with Mike and Jeff, is that correct, that the golf program is anticipated to lose 300,000 this year?
Yes, they are, they have a reserve fund, so, and as Commissioner Fish mentioned, it's an enterprise fund. I think the broader question is, are our rounds competitively priced, so that we don't lose the number of rounds? And I'll ask our golf manager, as a matter of fact, we discussed yesterday an economic impact study for the Delta Park area that includes the golf course, the racetrack, and Delta Park, and I can plug that into that analysis as well.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, there was a sentence in the, in the full budget package that stated, "CBO continues to recommend that the bureau perform an analysis of all the elements of the bureau's assets or require ongoing regularly scheduled maintenance, so that CBO and the bureau can work together to develop a funding plan." Is that not done? And if so, it seems to me to be such a basic assignment that it should be, it, this sentence implies that they've requested it multiple times, it's not been done. First of all, if that's correct, then why isn't it being done?
Donald, the vast majority of all our assets are inventoried, and we have condition, however, not every bench, and so that's, there's a, there remains a gap of objects in the park system that are not in our, our asset management database as inventoried with their condition. So we're trying to close the gap, and we have gotten from last year's budget a new asset manager, or asset inspector position that will help in kind of closing that gap.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other, other quick lightning round questions?
Lightning round question. Mike, I'm looking at CBO's infrastructure project ranking summary sheet, and I'm looking at your major maintenance one-time request. It looks like you're getting all- It looks like you're getting all, all of your one-time requests are covered by CBO's recommendations. You ranked two other things, vegetation monitoring and natural area asset management, apparently slightly higher, so those aren't covered. But otherwise, it looks like all six of your asks are ranked by CBO for funding. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner, and the two that aren't is because they're not capitalizable. They're, they're green infrastructure items, and so, they're not eligible for that, for that ranking process.
Okay, thank you.
So, Andrew, Ryan, anything else that you want to add from your analysis?
Okay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate this, this good presentation and good discussion. We're going to move on to the next bureau. As you says, we queue up more bureaus than we can get to typically in a session, so I think it's safe to say that we're going to do justice by PBM, because we have enough time left to do that, but we're not going to be able to do justice by housing today. Do you think that's a correct prediction, Andrew?
What time is it, 11:10? Yeah, the only question is whether we want to start the housing conversation.
Okay, all right, well, let's see how we do, and if housing is still standing by, then again, that's the, that's the straw you draw when you're the last bureau in these parades in the budget process. Come on up, Carmen.
Hello.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's try to do this 30 and 30. So, okay, yeah, we're going to try to, Carmen, we're going to try to get you to be succinct, because we have a bureau director after you who's not going to be around for a little while, so go right in.
Okay, well, good morning, Mayor Commissioners. Carmen Merlo, the Director of the Portland Bureau of Emergency Management. I want to acknowledge our Budget Advisory Committee members in the room, and welcome our amazing Neighborhood Emergency Team volunteers who are in the council chambers with me today. Our mission, as you know, is disaster risk reduction. However, I would argue that citywide resilience should not solely be the responsibility of one of the smallest bureaus in the city, but actually of all city bureaus, including every citizen. And so, we do rely on our Neighborhood Emergency Team volunteers to serve as force multipliers for us. So in the very brief 10 minutes that we've been allotted, I want to quickly cover a few areas, starting with significant budget issues. Of our overall budget, less than 40% comes from the general fund, and our burden on the general fund is minuscule, just 0.2% overall. However, for a very small bureau, we have a deceptively large budget, and that's because of one particular grant, the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant, our Homeland Security Grant, that we serve as the administrative pass-through agency on behalf of a five-county region. However, it's a much smaller grant, the Emergency Management Performance Grant, that we rely on heavily for not just personnel, but also to make up the costs of our rent at our Emergency Coordination Center, as well as the cost of our Bureau of Technology Services inter-agency agreements. So very quickly, I will go through the four decision packages that we've asked for. The first of these is, and I should add, that all of them are one-time asks. So the first package is for a limited-term planner to assist individual bureaus, update and put together continuity of operations plans. As you know, every bureau is expected to have a continuity plan. These are services that protect human life, health, property, and deliver services that the public relies on, particularly during emergencies. All bureaus did complete a plan in 2013. However, many bureau plans were not adequate and have since been revised, and some plans that were only minimally compliant with FEMA standards are now outdated. Currently, only 56% of bureaus have adequate continuity plans, and we acknowledge that the effort to create these plans has been challenging for many bureaus. So as a result, PBM is asking for one full-time continuity planner to meet this need. Without funding for this position, the Bureau would need to delay the development of other key emergency response plans, including volunteer and donations management, resource management, and private sector coordination. Our second request is for a limited-term volunteer program developer, and this is in support of both our Beacon and our Neighborhood Emergency Team Program. I think many of you are familiar with our Neighborhood Emergency Team Program. This is a program that we run in partnership with Portland Fire and Rescue, where we provide 28 hours of training in everything from light fire suppression, search and rescue, disaster medicine, and how to shut utilities off. But you're probably less familiar with our other program, the Beacon, which has the unfortunate name. Beacon stands for Basic Earthquake Emergency Communication Node. And I brought in a little show and tell for you back here. The Beacon Program is an important and innovative program that provides pop-up communication hubs. So think of these as hyper-local neighborhood extensions of our Emergency Coordination Center. The idea is that within 24 to 48 hours after an earthquake, we would set these up, and basically, what's inside these are a canopy tent, radio equipment that communicates with our fire stations and with our Emergency Coordination Center, as well as a small cache of first aid supplies. There are currently 48 beacons throughout the city, and you have a map of them as one of your handouts. These are primarily in parks and in school fields, and we use the Portland Plan's 20-minute neighborhood concept to site these. We put two in every neighborhood hub, which is how we got to 48. Like the NET program, Beacon is an important element of citywide earthquake resiliency strategy. It seeks to equitably serve all neighborhoods and depends very heavily on volunteers. Unlike NET, however, the Beacon Program has a very heavy equipment, maintenance, and tracking component. The big challenge we have is that we only have one person serving not only as the citywide NET coordinator, but also the coordinator for the Beacon Program. And so, this would assist not just in moving the dial on the number of active NET teams, but making sure that we actually have a viable beacon in every neighborhood. Our third request is for ADA upgrades to the Sears facility. I want to thank council for their allocation of funds for the fueling station, which includes one new fueling station on the west side at Sears. However, we put together in 2013 master plan for Sears, and that was a phased approach to building the site out. The first step was to do the rezoning. We did that two years ago. The next phase was for the fueling station. This is phase three, adding the ADA upgrades. And so, some of the things that it includes is installing a, an elevator, correcting the stairs, renovating the restrooms, revising the door locations and hardware, and it includes additional improvements to the parking lot and to stormwater upgrades. Final request is for a seismic assessment of a prioritized list of city buildings deemed essential for emergency response, and that includes the 911 Center, Sears, the Justice Center, both Kirby Building and Garage, as well as the garage at First and Jefferson, that also provide continuity of operations at City Hall, the 1900 Building and the Kelly Building, and then finally, many of our parks, which do serve as both gathering locations and respite for emergency response workers. I would ask you to consider that complete neighborhoods are not just those that have easy access to services and amenities that people need or want, but also, complete neighborhoods include the provision of emergency services, which includes active NET teams and Beacon locations. So, again, in the interests of time, I guess I'll just stop it right there and thank council again for including emergency preparedness as one of your budget priorities.
So I'm, yeah, I guess I'm curious, where are these beacons located, when they're like at Wilson High Field or something like that? Where do you find them?
We do try to secure them as best we can, and I'll just be very candid and tell you that a few have walked away. But some of them are indoors at parks locations, and we are trying to cite more of them indoors. Obviously, having them indoors prevents easy access, but having them outdoors also presents security challenges.
And then my other question was the ADA upgrades for the Sears facility. I guess I'm curious why that wasn't on the capital funding request, when the council adopted a policy of dedicating half the one-time for transportation, emergency, and parks?
Andrew, can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that because it's not currently an occupied operational facility, it's not included as part of the capital infrastructure, current capital infrastructure?
It's not repair or replacement, it's expansion of infrastructure. So.
I mean, it's a, it's a critical piece of infrastructure. Does that count for anything?
It certainly, it would in your funding decisions, yeah. So the 50% is set aside for repair and replacement of existing assets. It is now an existing asset, but not yet in service. So it occupies a little bit of a gray area, but it generally is seen as an expansion. But by all means, if it's, you know, a critical infrastructure, then there's still other one-time resources available for that.
Yes, please, Don.
Two things. One, well, before that, I think you do a great job-
Thank you.
-in an environment where nobody pays attention until there's a national disaster, and then it's too late. I do have my one week of emergency supplies stored away from my house in the backyard, so if the house falls down. In putting that together, I had a heck of a time on your website trying to find what I needed or suggestions. In fact, I had to send an email to your department and have somebody walk me through it. Now, I will admit, I don't have a 14-year-old home who can help me on the internet, but it did, it took me hours, and I never found it until somebody gave me directions. So, if there's others out there like me that want to do it and can't find it, that's a hindrance. The other thing that struck me, again, coming from a private industry where we had to have continuity of operations plans, I mean, it wasn't, we weren't allowed to say, oh, I can't get to it. 50%, 56% of the bureaus have it, which tells me 44% don't.
I want to clarify that. Every bureau has one, however, only 56% have what we would call compliant with FEMA standards. So, the other 46% are, are in need of some additional work.
So what does that mean? If the, if the building were to fall down, and this, and the bureau doesn't have that operations plan that conforms to FEMA, does that mean that they're inoperative?
Not at all. I mean, in some cases, the fact that they perhaps haven't identified alternate work facilities, succession planning, those could attribute to why the plan itself is inadequate. But I want to assure you that all, all the bureaus do have a continuity plan that ensures that they can maintain essential services even after an emergency.
Okay, thank you. In case of a disaster, an emergency of some sort, perhaps a major seismic event, who's in charge? Are you all? The mayor's the chief executive, I believe, but how do you mesh with the state, the local, the Highway Patrol, National Guard? How does that work?
Right. FEMA will tell you that all disasters are local, and so, for an event such as an earthquake, we have what's called Unified Command, which means we've got police, fire, water, and transportation equally in charge of the tactical operations. The mayor is in charge of overall strategy for the city's recovery.
Comments, requests?
Question in my mind. Carmen, in your budget tool, you identified, I think clearly, what populations and what areas in this city are disconnected from the NET teams in the Beacon Program. How, what part of your, your decision packages will assist you in achieving your goal of improving who is engaged and who is connected to the work that you're doing?
From an equity perspective, Dante, I would say certainly the limited-term position for the Beacon and NET Program. We are trying to make inroads into increasing the diversity of our Neighborhood Emergency Team volunteers. We did a couple of unique things this past year. We did a special training in New Columbia, and we hope to bring more of that training out to the neighborhoods, so that they're not coming all to the fire, fire station too, over at 122nd and Sandy. So, increasing outreach to underserved neighborhoods and bringing the training to the, to the community, as opposed to having them come out to, to us.
So would it be fair to say that that, you would prefer that to be an ongoing position rather than a one-time?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Other questions, comments, requests?
I just have to say something, because I, my husband is in the room here. He's wearing a vest, he's in camouflage, and I, you know, I've seen how hard all the volunteers work in this, this program is a wonderful way for people to be involved in their city. So, and I, I second Dante James's concern, because right now, with one person working there, they go for low-hanging fruit, the people that have the time and energy and availability to volunteer. But a second person would probably allow you to do more outreach. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Carmen, on the Beacon Program, CBO had a concern about a one-time ask for somebody to develop the, for the volunteers of the Beacon Program, and they said, well, wouldn't this have to be ongoing? And my understanding is that you actually think that once you got Beacon teams up and running, it would be possible to keep them going without a digital person forever?
That's true, and I have Jeremy Van Kuren, who is the NET coordinator, to talk about that.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely correct. The way we've got the program designed is that we need a team of eight Beacon volunteers for each one of our 48 beacons, but the idea is that once we can get a team up and running, they're self-sufficient, and so the impact is relatively low. I'm sorry? 30 minutes?
Another question I had is, this isn't a PBM budget question, but it's a general citywide budget question. Would it be fair to say that from an overall emergency preparedness perspective, seismically strengthening the Portland building should be a city priority?
Wow. Yes, Commissioner Novak, I do think strengthening the Portland building should be a citywide priority.
On the equity issue, again, is there a specific effort in terms of volunteer recruitment and, and coordination to deal with the issue of languages?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The question is, are you, are you not only looking at equity in terms of racial and cultural equity, but are you also looking at improving our language capability among the volunteers, so that we can reach different parts of the community that don't necessarily have a great command of English? We've got more and more of those.
Absolutely. We've, we've substantially increased the number of applicants to our program, to the point where I prioritize folks into the program who do have particular skills, such as fluency in another language.
So that this particular NET team has this, that?
I haven't tracked it formally, but I was, I'm going to be getting, I'm beginning to track that. Previously, we, we had very, very few volunteers that had language skills beyond English, but that's changing to the point where we do need to track it.
So just going back to Commissioner Novak's question about the seismic issues in the Portland building, do we have an inventory of all city facilities and assessing their seismic upgrade needs?
I saw Bob Kita in the room. We currently don't, and I believe that OMF is currently undertaking a facility condition assessment of all city-owned buildings. Part of that will include a prioritized list of 15 buildings, is that, okay.
And in terms, so I think that's, that's a good thing to have, especially prioritizing which ones are the first to get done. Then going back to the NET team issue, I know that NET teams do need continued coordination from your staff. People move away, they get, lose their skills or whatever, plus, the last time I checked, I think we had, had less than 3,000 trained volunteers citywide. So, and again, reaching into the communities of color and the underserved populations. I know you, you and your staff do great work. I find it hard to believe that they can get everybody trained up within a year, and that, as I say, I believe that that position should be ongoing, just because there's so much work to do in this regard. And how many staff do you have altogether?
16, Commissioner.
And many of them are grant-funded and dedicated to doing particular other things, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that's not a big set of folks to do all the work citywide. Thank you.
With the tournament coming up, Commissioner, maybe one way to think of it is, once we get to the round of 16, there will be as few teams of the NCA tournament as there are employees of PBM?
I wanted to come back just on the West Side Operations Center, Carmen, because I think, I know you stated that there is a master plan, you know, for the site. One of our concerns, though, is that we don't yet have a plan as a city in terms of who's going, who are going to be the tenants for that site. And as a result, we don't really have a long-term funding plan in terms of both who would, who would pay for the ongoing, you know, maintenance operations of that center. So, one of our concerns about doing the ADA upgrades in, you know, lacking that plan was, are we sort of putting the cart before the horse? And does it make more sense, if we had one-time money, to invest in, in actual, a process to get to that plan? Because council's going to need to make the decision, not just about one-time free ADA upgrades, but what are the ongoing costs of this facility going to be? but what are the ongoing costs of this facility going to be? Make sure we set aside funds for that.
Well, I think it's a chicken and egg problem. You can't put occupants in the building unless there's ADA upgrades. So I think the sooner we can make the building occupiable, get tenants paying rent to OMF to help support that building, then we can start working about, looking into other occupants and building tenants.
And the ADA upgrades are going to be needed regardless.
Exactly.
They wouldn't be dependent on what kind of use of the building.
That's right, Commissioner.
We do know about at least some prospective tenants. I actually ran into Mike Abate in an elevator this morning in a garage. And he told me that Parks would be interested in moving City Nature employees to that location. And I know the PBM would like to have at least some maintenance equipment, particularly de-icing, at that location as well. Whether we can afford it is another question.
Well, and I think our concern is there are ongoing, I think we have early estimates. I mean, you know, potentially $750,000 for ONM, you know, major maintenance on the facility. And I think, I guess what I would say is, are we ready? Making ADA investments means we're ready to occupy that building and we're ready to set aside the ongoing funding to pay for this into the future. And so that really is the question that council's facing right now. It's not, do we make the ADA upgrades and then figure out what to do? It's, are we going to occupy the building? What are we going to put in there? And are we going to set aside the ongoing funding for that? And there's not currently a request for that ongoing funding on the table. And so I think that's really our major concern about this.
Other questions?
I think Bob might have something to say.
Of all of our inventory of buildings?
So as far as the building condition assessment, we have the contractor on board. We expect the draft reports to be in by this July. And from there, we will be going forward on the seismic assessments of the 15 buildings Carmen has either identified or within the OMF portfolio.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. And thanks to all the volunteers who are here and for all that you do. Obviously, I think the council understands the critical role that you play in the system. We have a small bureau with a big job, and it simply is not possible without what you do. So thanks for being here and thanks for being ready.
Mayor, can we suspend the rules to give it some, a round of applause to our net team?
Thanks very much. Okay, let's move, move equipment and people and get ready for the Housing Bureau, please. I'm sorry, Kristy, did you have anything else that, that you need to add?
No, no.
We got them covered. We will jump in, I promise.
Yeah, I know, it's horrible.
Well, I'm sure you'll be so scintillating that he'll be wide awake. No, no, I was just, no, just trying to, yeah, you're not nodding, it's not like that. Yeah, no, I'm good. How about you, Yara? I haven't heard any nervous.
How are you? Thank you for being here.
Okay, Ms. Manning, I think the floor is yours. Welcome.
Good morning, Council, City Budget Advisory Committee. My name is Tracy Manning. I am the Bureau Director of the Portland Housing Bureau. I'm here with a good chunk of my leadership team. So whatever question I can't answer and CBO can answer, I'm sure they can. I don't think it's appropriate to dedicate a budget presentation to anyone, but I just want to say that it, to make, this morning makes me mindful of Gretchen Cifori and her loss this past week, so. So when we invest in affordable housing, we do more than build buildings. We create communities in complete neighborhoods that are inclusive, healthy, sustainable, and diverse. And we create a lifetime of opportunity for children whose success in life will depend in no small part on their zip code. By building and preserving housing with affordability that will remain in place for 60 years, PHB projects are indeed investments in the infrastructure of our city. So we all feel that our city is going through a time of tremendous growth and change. This budget request is designed to respond to three key elements in our current environment: market conditions, displacement, and the new Home for Everyone Community Plan. So by now, Portland's affordable housing shortage has made national news. We continue a tight rental market with a vacancy of less than 4% in the entire metro area and 11% year-over-year rent increases. Fifty-four percent of Portland's renters are now considered cost-burdened. That's paying more than 30% of their income for housing. That means nearly 60,000 Portland households face choices about which bills to pay, and it does put them at risk of homelessness. Another issue we're tackling is displacement. Housing affordability is also a key racial equity concern as the market segregates us by income and race and concentrates poverty. Earlier this year, Portland was named the most rapidly gentrifying city in America in this century. Of the 300 North Northeast community members who took our survey this past fall, nearly half of the African-American homeowners shared that they were at risk of displacement. And 83% of the renters felt they were at risk of displacement. Half of them were from communities of color. Finally, we have opportunity presented by Home for Everyone. Last year, Mayor Hales, Commissioner Saltzman, joined with leaders in the Multnomah County, City of Gresham, Home Forward, and Meyer Memorial Trust to establish a governing board that has moved aside the red tape of jurisdictional boundaries to coordinate community-wide efforts on ending homelessness. Thanks to their efforts, this community has committed to an ambitious goal of meaningfully and sustainably moving the needle on homelessness within two years, including answering the mayor's challenge to end homelessness among veterans in Multnomah County by the end of the calendar year. This afternoon, and I think perhaps in an hour and a half, the Home for Everyone Executive Committee will hear a proposal for how to end homelessness in our committee. This group has taken great strides in data outcomes and evaluation work. I have to give a shout out to James Carter, who has been helping the committee with outcomes and performance measures. And for the first time, we actually have a model that will tell us what it takes to shift from being a responsive system, sort of running to catch up with homelessness and to keep pace with forces that we don't control, to moving to a system that actually prevents it. So we know now what upfront investment, granted large, but if sustained for a few short years, can dramatically reduce our unmet housing needs by 2020, allowing us to shift sustained efforts toward prevention and hand off to the poverty, anti-poverty system. So if these are the issues we're trying to address, I wanted to share a little bit about our current funding landscape. The resources the city has available to use to address these issues are tax increment financing, our federal entitlement grants, and of course, General Fund. So with TIF, we're in the midst of an eight-year window of stable funding with TIF. It averages an availability of $18 to $20 million per year, although a number of our recent actions in North McAdam and Interstate are going to front-load some of those efforts. Starting in the early 2020s, however, as the TIF districts start to drop off, we'll see a substantial drop in those resources. And of course, there's the limitations of the URA boundaries. Someone recently said, "We can't address the whole city's affordable housing shortage on a very small amount of acreage in an urban renewal area." So for the federal entitlement grants, community development block grant funding actually maintains congressional support. Even with that, this funding stream has gone down 28% over the last six years. And then our second major grant that we use primarily for affordable housing development home has had less support at the federal level. It's had a 39% reduction over the same six-year period, including this year. With the rate of reduction of those two grants has moderated some in the past three years. And then finally, of course, our City General Fund. While rising home values are on the one hand contributing to our current surplus, they are at the same time making the affordable housing shortage more acute. So on to our decision packages. Decision Package 1 is North and Northeast Portland Ownership Retention Program. So this program prevents families from losing their homes in the geography most heavily impacted by the legacy of displacement, and it is our highest priority. This is the same geography that we discussed at length during the North Northeast process. I do have a map for the benefit of the Budget Committee. Sorry, didn't get this in your handouts, but it's effectively the area historically affected by redlining and displacement. And it goes from Northeast 33rd to roughly Portsmouth, from Columbia to I-84 and the River. And so the issue is that while Interstate Urban Renewal Area runs through the heart of these neighborhoods, it, of course, skirts a lot of the residential areas where we're trying to prevent displacement. So PHB allocated $4 million in TIF over five years to home retention during the North Northeast process. But that won't impact the homeowners outside of that boundary. So this package is divided in two, all for homeowner retention in this geography. The first is to extend our existing successful programs into the residential neighborhoods surrounding the Interstate URA. These are home repair loans at 0% interest, averaging $30,000 for 22 homeowners who are up to 80% in median family income. And then a grant program, which is for lower-income people. Those grants average $5,000 per homeowner and will serve about 30 homeowners.
Tracy, this is, this home retention money would be for homeowners specifically?
Correct.
Not for renters, right?
Correct.
And it's my understanding that historically, we don't have much information on how much of the displacement has been of homeowners versus renters?
We don't. It's a question a lot of folks want the answer to. And we're going to walk, work with Dr. Bates to see, citywide. We were actually talking to BPS about this a couple of days ago, about trying to figure out how to track that. So these funds extend the existing program. Two-thirds of the single-family stock within our study area is outside of the urban renewal area and therefore not eligible for the TIF funds. We have a waiting list of nearly 100 low-income North Northeast homeowners at risk of displacement who can't access these programs just because of where they live. Our key performance metric, measure, measurement, is that based on the current program performance, at least 80% of those assisted will continue to live in their current home for 12 months after receiving services. The second part of this package is another use that is not TIF-eligible and would become available throughout the geography, both inside and outside the URA. So during the current community forums, we heard stories directly from homeowners who were struggling to maintain their homes and from stories of friends and families who had lost their home. But very often, the cause of that displacement was not something we could address with TIF, including debt, such as back property taxes, fines for code violations, and a lot of times just lack of access to the financial information for estate planning, for elders who wanted to pass on their home, people that had gotten into reverse mortgages and were really struggling to deal with what they needed to do with that. So we have also heard from the community groups who provide the services for the home repair loans that get in and know these families and say, "I can complete this home repair and it will absolutely make a difference to this family, and it's not everything they need, but we can't provide this service." And also, our homeownership partners, who you've heard quite a bit from, Partners for Affordable Homeownership, have recommended this package. So this funding supports direct assistance of up to 15,000 per homeowner, and that'll be 50 homeowners, and then staffing resources of up to $100,000 for community partners providing the services.
So the City Budget Office didn't recommend this and said that there aren't, there are not enough details on the program design? Have you been able to provide them with additional details? And is the City Budget Office any more supportive of this request?
I don't think that's changed. We've been in contact pretty quickly. Yeah, the program hasn't been written. It was recommended by our community partners, but all of the details aren't, aren't included. PCRI currently runs a home retention program that's pretty similar to this. And so we are relying heavily on the people who work in the community to share that this is a need and that it's been an intervention that they've been successful with. PCRI says they've had 97% home retention from this program. We haven't. Those aren't our numbers, those are theirs.
Thank you for that response. And you said that there's 100 families currently on the waiting list. Is that from the part that was within the URA that you, that we did a couple of months ago?
No, so that's people who call that are interested in the home repair loan program but are not in the URA. So it's not, a waiting list may be a misnomer. We have, we keep their application.
We currently don't have a program for them?
Not if they're outside the URA.
And how many are we serving inside the URA?
Approximately 10 households a year is what we currently have booked for.
10, 10, oh, 10 loans a year, and then the grants is probably another 50. Per year, per urban renewal area.
Tracy, you said that, I think I got the number, almost 100 homeowners were at risk for displacement. Can you, can you describe what that looks like? Are they going to go under? Are they going to be foreclosed on? Are they just going to have to sell, sell at a loss to predatory buyers? What does that look like?
This was self-identified. But I mean, I think, you know, sort of logically, the stories that we hear either from our partners or from the homeowners for when we are able to prevent displacement. Yeah, there's a lot of mortgage issues. There's just, there's a lot of people who have serious sort of system failure. Roofs is really common. And they just don't have the money to deal with it, and so they sell.
And have you seen, you know, if we're on the list of number one in the country, what other cities are doing to try to address this? And this is obviously something new, and doing the same old thing hasn't worked. So have you seen any other type of model besides PCRI that maybe reflects on the effectiveness of this idea?
The specific home retention intervention? You know, we haven't, we have not done national research for a program of this scale. We certainly can.
But what you're hearing anecdotally is from these individuals that their home repair will allow them to remain in their home.
Yeah, so the home repair program is, is something we've been operating for years. The part that's new is the non-repair portion. And yet, we're hearing the pilot program, right? And so that's the program. PCRI runs a similar program. And really what it's trying to provide, so as you identified, there's a variety of reasons somebody might be at risk from being displaced from their home. It could be a roof. It could be that there's, whatever the repair issue is, has created code violations that are stacking up on them. We see a lot of reverse mortgages. It could be a plumbing or a disability issue where that, so it's, families have these holistic issues. Our funding sources have these very specific things we're allowed to spend them on. And so I think from the stories we heard from the community, from the stories we hear from the providers, the goal is to fill in some of those gaps. So when we go to a person and say, we can say, "What do you need?" as opposed to, "Do you have something we can fund?"
Just wanted to add, with regards to the first half of the package for the $800,000 for the 80-plus to 120-plus households on the waiting list, through conversation with Housing in the last week, we've gotten additional information that would change our recommendation as far as funding that particular half of the package. The point of the issue was one of capacity. When we looked at limited PDC data around budget actuals, it kind of raised the capacity of client uptake, provider capacity with regards to providing the home, home repair. But in conversations with the Budget Office at Housing, they gave some more information that speaks to, you know, there being... that speaks to, you know, there being capacity inside the URA, therefore, external to the URA boundaries, there is capacity to meet the needs of those 80-plus households.
So, how much are you now recommending?
That's a great question. It would be the $800,000.
Okay, Decision Package Two. So, this package is designed to invest one-time city funds in the city's affordable housing infrastructure outside of the geography of the urban renewal areas. It also has two parts. Apparently, that's our specialty this year. The Opportunity Fund. So, this is what you funded last year for $1 million. These types of investments provide PHB the flexibility to be more nimble in our project funding, something we've really learned from the current real estate market, is our slower processes and policies aren't that quick when responding to changes in the market. It also allows us to invest where the need and the opportunity are greatest, again, outside of geographic boundaries. And it also is central to our efforts to end homelessness. Any of you saw the meme on Jon Stewart, "What do homeless people actually need?", it's homes. So, this funding package will support an additional amount of money for the Opportunity Fund. Currently, we've got two proposals on our existing $1 million fund for a combined total of almost $1.5 million, and we're expecting another proposal. We've received strong interest for another $0.5 million. That application hasn't been submitted yet.
Tracy, a question about the HIF. If the council, if you end up getting the $5 million for the HIF, is there anything that prevents you from, in a future allocation, writing into the competitive guidelines that bringing the cost per unit down is the primary consideration? In other words, is this a flexible enough fund so that you could use it to experiment in the marketplace to see how, how we can bring the cost per unit down?
Yeah, absolutely, and it's actually a major criteria in the current fund. Commissioner Saltzman ratchets that up every time we put a NOFA out, so, absolutely. Yep.
And just tell, remind me again what kinds of things you use this fund for?
You know, there's, there's two things we're trying to address. One is the geography, that urban renewal areas can't be the only place that we're building affordable housing. And then, two is our current NOFA process is designed for lots of great reasons, to be very transparent, very competitive.
I'm sorry, that's not my question.
So, this fund, so that fund, you can only apply for once a year.
That's not what I'm asking.
This fund, okay.
I'm asking, is this subsidies for multifamily apartments?
Oh, sorry.
What specific, because $1 million in real estate doesn't go very far.
No.
So, what is it that the money goes towards that does provide more than four homes?
So, it's for multifamily investment. It's, we're never the only funder. It's always leveraged with other funds, bank loans. So, I think one of the two proposals received, the rest of the money will be a bank loan, and developer equity. The other proposal received is looking for a much deeper subsidy level, and so, they'll receive funds from the state. They're doing a great deal of fundraising, that sort of thing.
Are we requiring, in terms of all investments made out of the HIF, are we requiring 60-year affordability?
Actually, you are requiring 60-year affordability, yeah. It's council direction, policy direction, that all city funds have 60-year affordability. Six-zero, 60. Thank you, Mike. Sorry, getting over a cold, like everybody else. So, that's the Opportunity Fund. The second part of the Opportunity Fund is for land acquisition. It's a tool in the toolbox that's been identified in several national studies. Most recently, the Duquesne Center did a study on maintaining diversity in America's transit-rich neighborhoods. So, we talk a lot about toolboxes, and do we have all the tools that other communities do? When we identify ones we don't, we try to go after it, like inclusionary zoning. This is a tool we have used in the TIF areas, but not as a city, to purchase land for the purpose of affordable housing development in the future. So, we actually have a fund available in our community, although not with city funds in it, for land acquisition, for the purposes of land banking, for affordable housing development. It's operated by Network for Oregon Affordable Housing, which is a 22-member nonprofit bank consortium established by the Oregon Bankers Association. We would propose these funds to be matched at least dollar-for-dollar by the funds available at NOAA to do land acquisitions specifically for the purpose of affordable housing development. Our partners in that fund would include the State of Oregon, Meyer Memorial Trust, MacArthur Foundation, Wells Fargo, Chase Bank, KeyBank, and Bank of America. We would want these funds to be more flexible than they currently are, lower interest rates, longer loan terms. And then, we'd have certainly underwriting criteria that we'd contribute, but the loan fund is operated by NOAA. And we think it's a great deal to gain a tool that we don't currently have in our toolbox to try to mitigate displacement and keep costs of affordable housing down. Okay, Decision Package Three, and I can, and the Home for Everyone Coordinating Board. So, in our city club address last year, Nan Roman, President and CEO of the National Alliance to End Homelessness, said, "We know what to do. We don't do enough of it, and we don't do it long enough. You have the capacity here in Portland. You have the knowledge." So, at last count, as you all know, the total number of people experiencing homelessness in our community was $4,500, excuse me, $4,500. Our current investments are successfully moving 3,000 people a year into permanent housing, and while that's no small accomplishment, we've done the analysis to show that it won't be enough to move the needle. To that end, we're seeking additional funds to strengthen existing efforts and to advance this new initiative. In January, as part of Home for Everyone Executive Committee, Mayor Hales and Commissioner Saltzman approved an action plan to house all homeless veterans in our community by the year's end. A coordinated effort by our local governments, the VA Home Forward, and a network of service providers is already housing more than 55 homeless veterans a month. So, this package is designed to do two things. First of all, to match the county in supporting our initiative director. The second is to give the Home for Everyone Executive Committee the opportunity to prioritize what they've, so the committee has asked, and the board has asked, for actions that would markedly impact homelessness in our community. They're getting those recommendations this afternoon. And so, this package is designed to, based on that fund, that committee's priorities. We had a timing issue, obviously. I think it's not exciting for CBO that we couldn't say exactly what we wanted this to fund, but the idea is that this is what this executive committee is spending its time And finally, Decision Package Four is a little bit technical, but it does support our community's goals to end homelessness. So, we do not receive, in all of our general fund, we receive a COLA except for the $4.6 million that council allocated when we, in a budget note, allocated isn't the right word. CBO will obviously have to help me out here. The previous funds that were one-time only, that council in a budget note said should become ongoing, did become ongoing, but because council didn't direct CBO that those funds would get the same COLA that the rest of our general fund got, they don't. They stay flat, and when the rest of our general fund gets a COLA, those funds don't. Any given year, we can sort of figure it out, and obviously, there's lots of years that we haven't received a COLA. But of course, over time, time value of money, this starts eroding what these funds can do. And since most of our general fund supports our homeless programs, that's where the impact happens. So, you know, I can tell you a story from my own professional history, receiving for over 15 years federal funds through our Continuum of Care allocation that didn't ever, ever, ever get a COLA, something every recipient deals with. And they were supporting, I don't know, it was 112 units of housing for people living with addictions, never, ever, ever getting a COLA. You know, we, first few years, you sort of scrap around, maybe one or two years, you get a grant, then you start doing some fundraising, and over time, you just can't support the units anymore. And so, I remember the year that I called the Bureau of Housing and Community Development and said, "I can't do it anymore. I can't, you've got to let me reduce the number of units that we're providing. I'm out of money to pay staff." Took a long time, you know? It wasn't urgent last year, wasn't urgent when we asked for it the year before. Eventually, it adds up, and I guess just logically, it seems like all of our general fund should have COLA or none of it, either way. That's effectively what this package is, is hopefully, CBO has said, "We need council direction to fix this." So, we're asking you for that direction. There is, because it does indeed have to be ongoing, there is an offsetting cut package that I hope you won't take.
Yes, a couple of questions. On that, on that last issue, the last sentence says CBO doesn't recommend it because there were no expected results based upon the budget guidance. It doesn't say they don't support it, but it seems to me that they're...
This is the last package, the COLA package? Yeah. We need to get a little clarification. I don't know if, my understanding of this is that there was one year of a missed inflation around that 4.6%. I thought the 4.6 million, excuse me, I thought that was growing every year. I'm sort of looking at Mike Johnson to see if he knows. I'm, I'm pretty sure it is. I think there is, there is a gap there, and we've talked to the Housing Bureau before about it, that we were directed to add 4.6 million, which we did. There was a year missed there, and inflation on 4.6 million is not insignificant. And so, I think, you know, that's essentially what they're saying is, you know, had it grown the year we added it, we would have been able to provide more services. I'll have to clarify, Tracy, on whether it's still...
Okay, yeah, my understanding is that it wasn't ever, would not ever be subject to COLA unless you received further direction from the council.
So, Andrew, you're saying it's a one-time request, not an ongoing request?
Well, it would still be, even if one year was missed, it would still be ongoing to fix it.
To add to the COLA on the 179.
Just like cost of living for employees, you know, that when you add the 2%.
Right, but it would be 2.1%. It wouldn't be, it would be 2.1% of 179. It wouldn't be another 179.
Right, it wouldn't be compounded, but we're looking for, we know that, I just don't know it here today. We can, you know, crosswalk whether it was added, whether it was missed for one year or whether it's been missed for multiple years.
So, Andrew...
But overall, the issue is, I mean, essentially, yes, I mean, Tracy outlined it, we were directed to add an amount. That amount is lower than what the Housing Bureau, you know, would have been able to provide otherwise. Really, what this is, it's $180,000 to increase housing services, so...
So, based upon that last sentence, if, I mean, you're not supporting it, but you're don't, you're not saying you don't agree with it. You're saying you don't support it because housing didn't submit what they were supposed to submit. Non-submission of expected results per budget guidance is the exact word you used.
Yes, so when the bureau submitted a decision package, part of that submission is laying out expected results. So, what's the consequence of funding? What's the consequence of not doing funding? So, the basis of my analysis for the bureaus in my portfolio is looking at expected results based on what's on the decision package, coming to some level of confidence, whether those expected results are going to pan out or not pan out.
And I agree with you 100%. So, you've got, it seems to me you've got a couple of things to think about, as do they. Second of all, I was surprised with your last short-term rent assistance cut. It seems so contrary, it seems so contrary to what your charge is. And it seems to me it's cheaper, I mean, you're talking about about $4,000 per household. Seems to me it's so much cheaper to keep people in housing than it is to deal with it once they're out. So, I just don't understand why you would...
Why this is the offer?
Why you would even think about cutting that? Especially when you're hiring a human, you're hiring an FTE. I mean, I'd rather see this state and the FTE not hired.
Yeah, understood. We can't get the money out the door without our staff. I mean, it's, so it's sort of a...
But you're talking about a half, a half a person, so...
Well, yeah, and a half a person, it was, wouldn't cover this cost. That wouldn't be sufficient. I'd have to keep going into additional staff. I mean, the issue with homeless programs, and you'll see, in years where we get more money, we also put it into straw. And places where we have little cuts, we take them from straw, and the reason is that it's not facility-based. It's, it's just very, very flexible. Our providers spend as much of it as they have available, and if there's less available, they spend less of it. And if we have more available, we also put it in this pot, and out the door it goes very quickly, as opposed to a shelter. It's very difficult to cut $180,000 from a shelter because so many of their costs are fixed and in staffing. So, we, no, no particular reason for you to believe this, but we actually did scour the budget, because I said, "Look, I don't want to put up homeless programs again. Where else do we spend general fund?" Well, we do spend some general fund on overhead, but it's the lease payment is the biggest place we spend general fund on overhead. I can't pay for part of the lease.
Well, I would just hope you and the council would reconsider. That seems to me, for those 45 people, that's a, I mean, that's a huge life-changing event. Lastly, and you don't need to really, this is not really a question, but I keep reading in non-Oregonian publications, so I want to get that on the, you know, there's this perception that government housing, acquisition of land, building of affordable housing, is so much more expensive than the private sector, that it's so inefficient, it creates, and it's, so it's better for that, for the private sector to do that. Is that accurate?
No.
I mean, if you look at square feet, the cost per square feet, is, is it, is there a difference?
Yes, and I think we're looking at maybe having a council work session on this issue. But yeah, that's definitely something that we're spending a lot of time looking at, not just in Portland. California actually just studied the whole state. Minnesota had, did a big study. It's, there's a national study by Urban Land Institute and Enterprise, all about the cost of affordable housing. What costs more? When does it cost more? Is it worth it? Is there anything we can do about it? And so, we're doing similar work here.
So, back to Commissioner Fishes, which I thought was a very perceptive observation. As a citizen, my perception is it costs the city a lot more of my taxpayer money than it does for a private contractor to build housing. Therefore, I'm less supportive, i.e. the sewer water versus transportation. So, it's either true, so we have to correct it, or it's a perception problem which we have to deal with.
Don, can I just make one comment? And there's some innovation in construction methods that is helping to drive down costs. For example, modular housing. The city experimented modular housing out in Lentz a couple of years ago with NEA, and it was promising. And one of the things the city learned is that the real savings come in building it to scale, that, you know, six to eight units, you get some savings, but if you imagined a full build out of a multifamily building with modular, you could drive down costs. Now, that's, that's an example of innovation in production methods. And also, it turns out, there are businesses in Oregon that make modular housing, so it's a great way to cross, cross-subsidize industries that are rural Oregon. The biggest policy question we're going to have to take up is, how many of the policies that we in the public side care about, are we willing to make more flexible in order to drive down costs? How important is it to us that workers get paid a family wage? How important is it that buildings have, are green and built for the long term with energy efficiency? How important is it that low-income people get to choose to live in high-opportunity neighborhoods and not just distressed neighborhoods? I mean, how important is it to us to have services on-site for people that need the help? Those are big policy questions, and, you know, every dollar of public subsidy triggers a discussion... a discussion about how many of our values follow those dollars. And Tracy and Dan and others are leading this discussion, but it isn't as simple as one would think, because many of these are policies the council holds dear and the community holds dear, like prevailing wage. And we don't have the flexibility just to say, "They go away." That said, what if we could harness the competitive competition in the private sector, as Dan is doing, to come to the city and say, "We can build this cheaper," still within our values, like using modular housing, maybe smaller footprints, different kinds of innovations? And that would be really cool, because we'd be stretching the dollar without compromising our values.
So, if you reduce all those variables and compare the costs, are they about the same?
I guess it depends on what all those variables are.
Well, I understand the values. I understand the values.
Right.
I agree with those. But you ought to be able to reduce it down to as few variables as you can.
Just building the box. Sure, if you're just building the box, people can do it for effectively the same price. Shields Obleitz explained it to me once, even within the private market, there's people that build all along the spectrum. You know, you can build extremely inexpensively regardless of whether you're for-profit or nonprofit. We've got some beautiful, wonderful, effective, affordable housing developments built by private developers, for-profit developers, that also happen to be some of our more expensive per unit, for lots of really good reasons. It's a much more complicated question than you'd think.
Well, I'm sure it's complicated, but once it gets out of the public, it's not complicated.
Yeah.
It costs more for the city, less for the private, therefore, why are my taxes going to pay more? That's simple, but it's a complicated problem, but there's a simple perception.
Yeah, it's very true. Thank you.
So I'd like to ask a question about your performance indicators, but let me preface that by saying that Tracy and your staff have been frequent guests of the Planning and Sustainability Commission between urban renewal districts and the comp plan. And I think it's, the whole PSC is aware of the challenge in front of us to produce the amount of affordable housing that's necessary to meet the needs of the residents of the And that's why I want to focus in on your performance measures, that they don't really illustrate meeting the need as far as, actually, there's a lot of measures that are about effort, you know, number of units produced in a year, but they're not calibrated against the need. So, I'll give you an example from Parks. Parks has a measure for what percentage of people live within half a mile of a park, so we can assess how well they're meeting the needs of the community. I don't really see any of your indicators that are scaled against how many units are required to meet the needs of the city, and, you know, it would seem to me it would help illustrate better the resources you actually need to meet your mission if we showed that in the indicators.
Thank you, yeah. We will work on some of that. Thank you.
It's getting late, so lightning round? And some of these are just requests for information, rather than necessarily getting it today. Tracy, my first question is, if we took the remaining one-time money and all the ongoing money and gave it to housing, could you spend it in this next fiscal year?
Sure I could, yes.
Glad to add that on the record. You know, we're going to be taking up PDC's budget in a little while, and they are the conduit for your 30% set aside. Andrew, do we have a good chart over the last five years of the money, of the 30%, how much has been spent by urban renewal district and how much is left?
Yes.
So we can all get a copy of that? Okay. Dashboard, I think, I want to make a couple suggestions on dashboard. First is that I think that it would be useful to consider having both a new construction and a preservation dashboard, since your bureau does such a good job on both. And we're talking still about 0 to 60 MFI, but since you rehabilitate and preserve a lot of units in addition to building units, and since those are units that are typically at risk of being lost, it's a different side of the same conversation, but I would say that that's, that that is a dashboard we ought to consider adding, and maybe do it as two columns side by side, so that you can see them together.
I'm on the same.
I had trouble reconciling the housing, the dashboard data that you currently have with just my anecdotal memory. And I know that you and Dan are coming in April with a whole presentation on data, and starting FY 1314, you produce an excellent set of documents showing how you spend your money, your dashboard. But for example, you know, the rough number that I have '08 to '13 is about 3,000 units that you either built or preserved, and the dashboard shows about 1,000. And what I couldn't find in the dashboard, for example, is, I just took randomly Grace Lanning, Budclark Commons, a couple other things, and I got by a factor more units invested in and built in FY 1011, FY 1112. So rather than deal with this as an abstraction, could, do you have the underlying data of the various projects and the units?
We sure do.
So let's, if we could circulate that, because I, I'm not sure whether I'm just reading this incorrectly or you have a different methodology. I think you're, I think you're still focused on 0 to 60, but I don't see Budclark Commons here, which is 130. I don't see Grace Lanning, which is 205. So I don't, I don't understand the numbers that are currently in the dashboard, and I think it's possible they're off by a significant amount, or at very least, let's look at the underlying data and just figure out what we're measuring. But again, I think preservation, since you've done such a great job in that, ought to be a separate dashboard. Number three, on the HIF, we currently co-mingle our funds with the county in a lot of areas. We put the straw money together, and Mr. Wood, I thank you for your comment about the offset on straw, because I turned to Dan and asked if you were a plant. I mean, the council has consistently said to the bureau that that's one of the best investments we make as a community, it's one most cost-effective, it has the greatest return. So it's a rather painful cut to have to put that in there, and I think we have to, my own view is, we have to defend short-term rent assistance. But in terms of the HIF, since we co-mingle a lot of funds with the county, is it our intention, if you're asking for $5 million for the opportunity fund, is it your intention to ask the county to match that so that we have $10 million and we can really do some business?
I may well be my boss's intention.
So they have, I mean, they're flush with general fund discretionary too, and you've made the case that it also leverages other resources. So this would be a great idea, a great example of the city and county working together, and I hope if we do consider the $5 million, that it comes with the proviso that the county matches it, so we can double our... Do you have a request in this budget for fair housing? Because we did make a commitment to at least regular testing. Do you have a follow-up request for monies to handle the next round of testing?
We have that in our budget.
It's in your budget? Tracy, I noticed that someone's going to pull out the chart we got at the beginning of the hearing, and it's, and the one that has Portland Housing Bureau in your base budget, and they're going to say, "Oh my God, that you've just, the number has skyrocketed in the last couple of years." And of course, it's because the council converted your one-time money to ongoing. So you were the classic example of having a shadow budget of one-time and ongoing. It looks like you're one of the highest performers in terms of your base budget going up, but really, all we did is we took your serial one-time and we made it into the base. Is that correct, Andrew?
Yeah, for the most part, yes. That's a, that's a big chunk of that base budget increase, yes.
And that's it for now, but thanks for an excellent presentation. I wanted to prompt a little CBO housing smackdown here on the topic of the, of land banking. It seemed to me just off the cuff that doing land banking seems like, you know, reasonable long-term strategy, and one thing I want to ask Tracy is, do you, are there very many other long-term strategies that you are able to pursue at all? And I know that CBO did not allocate money for land banking, and I've heard a bit about what's, why CBO said that, but I'd like to hear some back and forth on it.
Yeah, well, obviously, development of affordable housing with a regulatory agreement is our primary other long-term strategy, but that, of course, is in the moment, and it doesn't secure future affordability.
I'm not sure we're ready for the smackdown.
I know you guys are wanting to end, but I did want to ask a couple of things. I wanted to weigh in on the dashboard too, and other people brought up some really good points. I like to, when I looked at the dashboard on something like housing, it's neat if you can see, just kind of get even a sense of like what the whole housing thing is all about. And so one of the things that occurred to me is that return on investment or something, like you're getting like $5 million, and is there some way to show like what it brings so that you can look at this and say, you know, for X dollars, we got X people housed? And so anything that you can do, and I don't even know how you would structure that, but that's something that I felt like was missing there. And then it sounded like, when I heard you talking about saving those homes in north and northeast, that you have people who, for a variety of reasons, aren't able to keep their homes. Now, one of those reasons has, have been predatory loan practices, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that outside of the city's scope to go after those banks or anything like that?
Not completely, but I think that's probably, yeah, it's a non-budgetary question that we ought to follow up with you on.
Well, it's just that it so impacts the budget. The other thing that I want to say is that that is a relatively large amount of money for a small amount of return at this time. I am not speaking against it. I'm just pointing out that you've kind of gone into an area now that is already a hot market, and so you're trying to save these homes. And so I'm, what I'm trying to point out is that as we, as you move, as these hotter markets move into East Portland, you will save yourself a lot of money by thinking about these issues ahead of time and trying to address them ahead of time, so that when East Portland begins to heat up, you're not going to have to go in with $10 million to save a few homes.
Can I just make one, may I make one observation, Mayor? You know, we mentioned Gretchen at the beginning. We should also mention John Gray. And to your point, when Mr. Gray, before he died, he gave a rather large chunk of his philanthropy to Habitat for Humanity. And they went in the teeth of the recession, and they bought land in East Portland when it was affordable.
Perfect.
And the reason that you're seeing this huge expansion of their footprint in East Portland is they used his dollars, the kind of dollars she's talking about, to land bank. And they bought it when developers were moving, were abandoning projects, and people were trying to sell dirt. So that was the, one of the great gifts that he gave our community, and then Habitat capitalized on it and is building it out. Let me offer the contrary, let me offer the other side of the case. One of the challenges we have in North McAdam is, once we do parcel three, what's the next opportunity? The city's negotiating with Mr. Zidel for potentially developing a piece of dirt. If we were able to acquire that dirt now, then it will be a much more cost-effective development. If we can't, if we can't negotiate price or buy it now, and all the wonderful things happen in North McAdam, then you know what happens. In five or 10 years, when we try to acquire that dirt, we pay a premium, to your point. So this is where doing it upstream is extremely cost-effective, both in East Portland and in urban renewal districts.
Exactly, and maintaining a neighborhood, you know, I mean, the people want to stay in their homes in north and northeast. I honor that, but it's going to be extremely expensive now, whereas 15 years ago, it would have been a lot cheaper. So bear that in mind as East Portland changes. Let's see, oh, the other thing is, Oregonian had a whole series of articles about homelessness. Now, it's probably a bad time to ask you, "Well, what did you think of those articles?" But there was one on, about this builder who could really churn out apartments, and I was impressed. He sounded, it was interesting, I can't remember his name, but one of the things that I worry about is for East Portland, is that somebody comes in and just does that, and we have all these apartments built at the same time, and they're kind of cheap, and then in 30 years, they're just going to look terrible. So know that that's, that opinion is out there, and that that's probably not the way I would want my part of the town to develop. Thank you.
So before we close, let me see if...
Oops, sorry. We sit right next to them, not in the peripheral vision.
Use that elbow.
Yeah, it's okay. And so one of the housing requests, which isn't in the Housing Bureau's budget, is the rental housing inspections, because that's in the Bureau of Development Services where the inspectors lie. And I'm wondering, so we do have a request from Development Services to expand that inspections program, which of course speaks to Katie's point of quality rental housing. Commissioner Fish led a group before the recession to look at potentially adding a surcharge of $5 per unit to pay for rental housing inspections. I'm wondering, is there any, would there be capacity within your current staffing to revive that discussion, or do you need to, at this late stage, add another, add requests for staffing to revive that proposal?
I certainly wouldn't take an FTE to do something like that, but let me get back to you about what it would take.
Thanks, because it's, it's one where you can almost wish we could co-sponsor between bureaus, the different budget asks, because it really will properly, I certainly don't have the staff within Development Services who are familiar with all of the partners and able to lead that process. I would, our request is for a one-time ask as to expand the program, and so I would be very supportive if you want to come back with a request for staffing for that, because ongoing, it could be a way to pay for services. We, housing isn't necessarily seen as an enterprise bureau, but I think there may be some places where you might be able to get some partners to provide some revenue in it, so I'd like you to come back with that request.
Dan, can we also clarify that industry agreed to that surcharge as part of a package of reforms? This is not a new tax or fee. They agreed to it provided we did some other things, and that's, that's the question, are we going to implement the whole package?
Right.
Yeah, it's a huge need. Thank you.
So before we close, Dante, any particular comments on how this bureau used the equity lens?
Thank you, Mayor. I think quite well. I was, I was very impressed with the depth and breadth by which they completed the document itself, and spoke to the issues East Portland spoke to, the need to address the gentrification issue specifically. And I guess in that regard, I have a question, maybe back to the smackdown, Commissioner. You know, the CBO seemed to indicate that, one, you hadn't identified any particular inventory outside of the URAs to purchase in the land bank, and then, secondly, you should stay within the URA and use unallocated TIF money, but you also spoke to your desire or need or interest in stepping outside of the URAs to do this work. One, is the first statement true? Is there identified inventory? And second, why is it important to step outside of a URA to do this?
It's true that I don't have inventory that we've identified that we would recommend a nonprofit apply to purchase for these funds, so that's true. I don't know that our nonprofit partners aren't aware, certainly we've all heard from Colleen Neighborhood, of some parcels they'd be interested in. And I mean, I think the issue around the URAs is something that certainly folks are familiar with. The areas that we map for opportunity, areas that are at risk of displacement, sometimes are behave themselves and map to URAs and oftentimes don't. And so I think the city's desire is to solve the affordable housing problem, not just on that tiny amounts, bits of acreage, but where it's going to do our citizens the most good.
To not relegate folks to a particular area to be able to purchase where they want.
Housing choice, yes.
So, yes, I mean, I think their assessment overall was very well done in terms of who's impacted, where people are impacted, geography of all of this. So I would, I would give kudos to the bureau on this. Thank you.
So Dante had previously graciously told me privately or pointed out about the Parks issue with considering folks with disability as part of our equity lens. Can you both give me some information about accessible housing for people with disabilities, and whether that's addressed at all within your budget requests?
It's not an issue we've figured out how to tackle, and it'd actually be another great partnership with BDS, just in terms of data systems, and how do we... great partnership with BDS, just in terms of data systems, and how do we track when someone has built, you know, with universal design that's accessible? Or a lot of our partners build units that are convertible, so they don't, someone doesn't know, you can only be in that unit. And we don't frankly have an answer to that yet.
I will say, Commissioner, having sat on a couple of the NOFA panels, that that's an absolute consideration in determining what some of the best proposals are as it relate largely. How are people with disabilities considered in the, in, in the creation of the proposal and in the development process? So it is absolutely a consideration in the NOFA process.
Can we have, Mayor, just a 30 seconds?
So one thing I wanted to highlight that didn't come up in this conversation is just a question around the city's investment and evaluation, particularly third-party evaluation. In the last seven years, the city has invested about $51.6 million in general fund to house the homeless. In the next seven years, we're forecasted to spend about $102 million to, to assist those needing a home and helping them to find, find permanent housing. I think there's a question of, you know, what are the opportunities for our service providers to improve? What are the opportunities for the, the system to learn from those high-performing service providers? What are those opportunities to have someone from the outside who doesn't have any biases, any cognitive biases around being critical of the services they're providing? What are the opportunities to have an objective third party say, "Hey, you know, Portland, you're doing well here. You can do better here. This is how your sister jurisdictions do." So I think, I mean, in, with investments in, in direct services, I think the, the city would be served in putting some level of investment in evaluation, just as far as this process improvement, learning improvement. I think we do well, but I think there's always an opportunity to, to do better.
The other thing, just quickly to sort of follow up on Dante's, but I, I just want to make sure, you know, our, our, our analysis around sort of the URAs, inside and outside the URAs, wasn't intended to say there's not a problem outside the URAs. I think what we were getting at is there's a problem both inside and outside, but there are some additional resources that are still available inside. And so when it comes down to prioritizing general fund and where that goes, the question was, I mean, if we had solved these housing issues within the URAs and spent all the, the set-aside, then yes, you know, let's move outside of that. I think we're saying there, there are issues that need to be solved everywhere, so let's focus on solving those issues where we have some existing resources that are available in, you know, instead of spending some of the limited resources outside. Once, you know, we do that, we can, we can move outside as well. I think that was the intent. It wasn't to say that that problem doesn't exist.
And additionally, we're spending about 70% budget to actuels as far as our resources allocated to the housing set-aside. So it kind of raises a question of, you know, not only spending your existing resources, but then asking for new resources, seeing how, seeing how you can get all the money out the door that is provided in the set-aside.
Yeah, so I'd like to spend a little bit of time on that statistic, because we, if you sort of look at the PDC dashboard, the housing money gets out the door extremely well. I spend all the money I have, near as I can tell, so if there's something you want to check up on, let's do that for sure.
Follow up on that, that'd be helpful. Any more, last, last request for information? Appreciate everybody staying extra time. Appreciate being able to get through good, three good reviews of three, three bureaus so far, more to come?
Yes, a week from Thursday.
A week from Thursday.
Can we have the dashboard sooner than...
Yes, yes, you will get all the other dashboards late, late, end of this week, yes.
Done, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you all.